I'm calling this workshop to order. We are here to discuss the ethics ordinance and we will be receiving input from citizens and so we do not have, really have our backs to you like we did at our last workshop because we were just getting information from staff. Just to remind everyone, on July, on June 27th, we, at 5:00, we met and had the begin, the first ethics workshop and city attorney David Bragg went through a presentation but was not able to complete his presentation. So this is really a continuation of that meeting and it is my understanding that we're hopeful we're going to get through his whole presentation this evening and then the input that he's received from citizens, from comments in the last meeting and this meeting and the comments that he's received from city council, that will all be compiled together and then he will bring back a clean ordinance for all of us to look at. But this is really just like a long recess and we're, this is a follow-up meeting. So with that, Mr. Bragg?
Thank you very much, Mayor. The process that you described is exactly right with one addition and that is we've gotten, we've gotten some written submissions from Herb Goldstein, uh, uh, I'm Gold, I'm sorry, Goldsmith, Connor McEnally and one other and they are substantive, mainly procedural, but my intent, and they've been distributed to y'all. My intention is to take what appear to be the best ideas from those and incorporate them in the draft. The draft you get is not intended to be a final product, it's intended to be a draft which you will then make final based on your review or agreement or disagreement with the provisions. We're going to start tonight where we left off last week, that is, or two weeks ago, that is with the creation of Ethics Commission. Judge Dugan is the sponsor of these ideas and unfortunately he'll be a little bit late getting here tonight. The primary change has to do with the membership of the commission, increasing that number from three to five. And Judge Dugan's reasoning for that is it's incredibly difficult to have a quorum when you only have three people on the commission, especially when the three people are a priest, a, a high-ranking police officer and a judge. It's really hard to get all of them present at one time. His idea is to increase the membership to five and then there are some procedural changes in there as far as how the appointments are made, but others, but the five is the main change in that provision. And so I guess the first question would be, do y'all agree or disagree with the idea of increasing the membership of the commission from three to five?
I agree with that.
I agree.
I agree.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
And I'm fine with it going to five and that makes perfect sense to me. I did go back and look when this was originally put on city council agenda back, I believe, several months ago and it, the question was this. My understanding is with three members on the commission, it, they, it takes all three for them to, they, they need to have unanimous decisions. And if you go to five and three is a quorum, then is it still require all three of the quorum or is it two and are we now changing that two people are making the call by increasing the commission to five?
There's a change to the ordinance further on in subparagraph C that deals with that. But to lead into that, one of Mr. Goldsmith's recommendations was that the commission never be able to vote to sustain or dismiss a complaint unless four members are present. And so that's one of his contingencies. If we turned over to subsection C, it's two pages later in the written material. Let me see. Here, it, I drew this so that it would be a grad, gradation process so that you would never have fewer than three members voting to sustain or dismiss a complaint. If you have all five present, then three is the quorum. If only four are present, then three must vote to dismiss or sustain a complaint. If three members are present, all three have to vote to dismiss or sustain. So that's an approach out to, again, Mr. Goldsmith said we should never have, we should do anything of that nature unless there are four members present. So that's the policy issue to be, to be weighed by y'all.
Is there any input from other council members on, on that topic?
Well, I think one of the problems is going to be going back to where they are right now, which is if you make everybody have to be there all the time, you're never going to get anything done. But, you know, on the other hand, this is pretty serious stuff and you want to make sure the right decision is made. So I know that I have, have an answer, but I do have a concern.
And I understand the concern. I think Judge Dugan would say if he were here, there's only been one ethics proceeding since he's been on the commission. I believe that's correct. And so the frequency of these is infrequent. Now, does that make a difference? It could make a difference if it happens to come at a bad time, you know, and a period of time when there are a lot of conflicts. So it, it's a balancing process, you know. I, I think Mr. Goldsmith has got a good point. It's a very, very serious matter. At the same time, you don't want to tie the hands of the commission where they can't move unless they've got four people present.
But this would be four out of five as opposed to three out of three, right? So it does-
Right.
You did say Judge Dugan would be here?
He will be in a little bit.
Yeah, he was in, he called me and he's important.
Could we move on to another section and come back to that and ask his opinion on it? Since he's, he has experience, maybe he could address that.
I think that's a good idea.
Is it on now? This is to you, Mr. Bragg. Is there a standard practice on this with, with other ethics commissions?
I've not seen a standard practice anywhere. There are different practices, different places. This ordinance we have is a compilation of a number of different ordinances and the three and two is standard, you know, when you've got three members, the majority. But this was intended to alleviate the situation, increase it to five, alleviate the situation where you could end up with just two, making the decision even though you've got a five-member commission.
We're recognizing that Judge Dugan is going to be here to, to add some input on that. Is there any kind of guidance that the state ethics commission can provide on, on a three-member board and what the voting process would normally entail?
It's up to you.
Okay.
As to how you do it. There's not any state formula or requirement for that.
Mayor and Council? Mayor and Council, I would suggest that we follow the charter. Four members of the council shall constitute a quorum, so four out of five, four out of six. A majority of vote of those attending any meeting at which there is a quorum, so majority is three or four, is it not? Shall be sufficient to adopt any ordinance or resolution except as otherwise provided in this charter. So the citizens have said this is an acceptable way for you to set policies, rules and procedures that law enforcement enforce. So it seems to me to be a good policy to just follow something that the voters have already said is an appropriate way to govern, as I suggested.
I agree. I think we should move on and adopt what we thought.
So what we'll do is change it to four. You have to have four to have a finding, right?
I would just use the language in the charter.
No, three to have a finding. You can have a quorum with four, but three for a finding.
Okay. Well, here's Judge Dugan. We were waiting on you.
I waited on you.
I apologize, that day job gets in the way. My, my, I apologize to you. We were on this provision, we were, we were talking about increasing it from three to five.
Yes, sir.
And the, the last point discussed was that you would have to have four members of the commission present, correctly, four present in order to have a majority of three decide whether they would or would not be defining the-
Four present for a quorum.
Four present for a quorum.
Judge, there is some question as to what is the right answer and the charter speaks to four members of the council shall constitute a quorum to do business and a majority vote of those attending, which would be three of the four, would be sufficient to adopt any ordinance or resolution with the thought being that the citizens have approved this charter as an appropriate mechanism for setting policies and procedures from which to be governed and perhaps that's the right answer for the Ethics Commission as well.
And we were all wondering what you would think about that, so.
Y'all don't mess around and ask me a question. I, I, just personally, I think following exactly what the charter says. The citizens approve that. I don't personally think there ought to be a reason to deviate from what the charter, the way it says it in the charter.
I agree.
Great.
All right, we've got that. If, yeah, don't have it on here, but if y'all could turn to 1.15, .152 if you've got that in front of you dealing with conflicts of interest. Some very good points were made, made in this section by Alan Bordey, who I've used as a resource a number of times. He's a-
David, we ran out of numbers. You want to say those numbers again?
1.15, .125.
Ah. That's not what you said. Gary and I want you to know that's not what you said.
125.
125.
The issues, the issues raised here that I think are worthy of mention and discussion is there's not a definition of conflicts of interest in this particular section and should that be there? Conflicts of interest are in, in a general sense, sort of like pornography is defined by the Supreme Court. You know it when you see it. But it may be helpful to have a specific definition of conflicts of interest in this section and that was the recommendation made. There are a number of conflict of interest provisions in the ethics ordinance, but they seem to all deal with economic interest in a matter as opposed to other types of interest. And so obviously if you have a friend of a member of the Ethics Commission who is being examined, that would be a conflict even though under our other conflicts provisions it really wouldn't fit. So the suggestion was to reach back and locate and good, find, find a good definition of conflict of interest to use in this, in this section. And this has to do when the council needs to remove a member of the Ethics Commission because of the conflict of interest. The second problem in this is the language I use, which I added, it says if the city council agrees that there's an actual, well, the city council doesn't really agree to anything. The city council votes and so it would need to be changed to that, you know, in order to make it make sense and that's an easy fix. The other possible alternative and one y'all might consider is having, going back to the previous section, instead of having five members of the commission, have five plus an alternate. And that would give you a person to whom you could immediately turn and have, put that person fill the spot in the event there is a conflict. Again, that's a suggestion. So those are three different things to consider about this particular section. Do y'all have feelings one way or the other on any of those three suggestions? Defining conflicts of interest? I'll change the word agree to be appropriate, but then also possibly appointing an alternate to step in should there be a conflict.
At this point in time, the state legislature, I believe, defines conflict of interest based on economics. So maybe to make this a more simpler conversation, are there conflicts of interest that you would deem appropriate to address here that would be something other than economics? And if so, what are?
Now, we're speaking just between the commission-
From an ethics standpoint.
Okay. The commission and the person coming before the commission.
I would think they shouldn't be reviewing a family member. I would think that's kind of a problem for family reunions if nowhere else, right?
Yeah, and you know, the, and I'm not saying, I, I still haven't seen the Good Old Boy Network in Bastrop at work, but this would be a classic example of the problem of a Good Old Boy Network. Having somebody on the commission that you and your friend that takes care of you and all of that, I cannot imagine that happening with the people we've got, but that's the type of thing that I think you could add to the list of economics and that is a person who is a, 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 the relationship is so close that they couldn't be objective about it. When you were impaneling a jury, for example, one of the things you ask, you don't just ask about economic interest, you ask about relationships and, you know, how well they know the defendant or the plaintiff and is that relationship such that it would keep them from being a fair judge of facts? Similar here, where you have, is their relationship such that it make, create a difficulty for them to be a fair arbiter?
How do you draw the line? Where do you draw the line? Is there, is there language that adequately defines what, at least what we're, what I'm picturing in my head? How do, how do you put that in writing to say, well, if you see somebody more than once a month or more than twice a week or, how do you define what? The problem is, this is a small town and everybody knows everybody, so, you know, I see people once a year and hey, they're my good friends by me.
Well, if I could ask Judge Dugan to comment on that, he deals with this every time he has a jury trial and not being lateral, lateral open to you, but, you know, you deal with it all the time and so, and I know there's not an, an objective test that can be used to determine whether a juror, for example, shouldn't be impaneled.
Usually, and I'm paraphrasing what I say, is is there such a relationship that you could not be fair and impartial? Is there such a relationship? It, it, I think, council membership, you are exactly right. That's kind of a hard thing to define, but I think if, you know, say it's, you know, say a person's on trial, using the jury trial, say it's a criminal case and, and the potential juror is the best friend of the defendant, well, obviously their relationship prohibits them from being fair and impartial. And so, you know, some kind of definition like that. I was also thinking, if you don't define what is that conflict, we always in our jury charges say unless we, if a word or phrase has a special legal meaning, it's defined, if not, use the ordinary meaning. But even with ordinary meanings, they can have a couple of different meanings. I would strongly urge to define what that conflict is. If it's something as simple as, you know, they could not be fair and impartial because of a relationship or some, you know, some kind of definition like that.
Yeah, as you're talking, I'm thinking, could we throw it back on the shoulders of the member of the Ethics Commission itself saying, if your relationship to a person coming before you will affect your impartiality, then it's your responsibility to back yourself out, to recuse yourself.
Well, and I know as a judge, I do that. I have done that in the past when there is a case that comes in front of me and just to even avoid an appearance of impropriety, I will voluntarily recuse myself from the case. I actually just had a situation this morning in open court where, a long story, but I disclosed, because I believe in transparency like all of y'all do, disclosed I have somewhat of a relationship with this responsible third party in a civil suit and I said, I know him, I've been to his house, but it is not such a relationship that I, I don't think there's an appearance of impropriety. I'm not going to voluntarily recuse myself. However, if I'm on this commission and one of my friends comes in and that, you know, I, I know them or say it's a, the situation, I, I, I'm pretty sure I could speak for myself and the other two commissioners that y'all have right now. All of us will certainly voluntarily recuse ourselves. Moving forward though, you know, if say we go to five, I shouldn't speak to that, but, you know, I, I can certainly speak for Corporal Tank and Reverend Hines. We would, any of us would voluntarily recuse ourselves in a New York minute if it even had the appearance of impropriety, of hearing a case of somebody in that situation.
Mayor and Council, since this is going to be the responsibility of the city manager and the city attorney to make this call, might I suggest that there be a form that is required prior to every case? That, that information, some statement, because in a jury panel I have had to, I've been recused because in a criminal situation, the question is always asked, are you going to give more weight to law enforcement than others? As a city manager, I absolutely have to believe that the people that wear a badge in the city of Bastrop are telling the truth. If not, I've got a fundamental problem with the process. So I'm going to always be recused from a criminal trial given my relationship to law enforcement. I wouldn't have personal knowledge of that with some of these folks because I don't have your history being new to the community. So it seems to me that there should be some language on a form that before every case, they have to fill it out. You have, because every case will be different. There's no way to sit here and what if this? This is the quintessential problem we ran into on May 1st when we tried to what if everything that happens. That there just be a form that every commissioner has to sign prior to hearing a case to disclose, as you did. I have a relationship with this person, it's personal or it's not, I speak to him at the grocery store, I go to church with him or whatever, so that the city attorney and the city manager has the basis from which to determine if there is a conflict. Because absent any information or a responsibility on the part of the, of the commissioner to tell me that, I may not ask the right question. And then I'll be faced with, well, I gave you the answer to the question you asked. Well, sometimes I don't know what question to ask.
And speaking for myself, I would certainly have no problem going at a form, say, whoa, I shouldn't hear this or I have this relationship. I, I guarantee you, if it goes into even a little bit of the gray area, I personally will automatically recuse myself from that. That's, to me, a no brainer because that is the whole purpose of, of hearing an ethics complaint. Do I have an issue with it or not? I, I don't, I don't want to taint it from the very get-go. So I would probably, but I certainly wouldn't have a problem, oh, wait a second, this, the complaint was on this person, X, Y, and then I have certainly no objection to disclosing any type of relationship that I would have with a person. So I have no problem with that.
When Connie and I went to the training at Capd'Alaria-
CapCog.
Uh, CapCog. That's what their ethics guy said was file a disclosure when you have any kind of relationship like that. Doesn't excuse monetary conflicts. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't get you out of hot water, but at least you know the, you know the answer upfront.
As, when I'm rewriting this, if you do file a form saying you do or you don't, is there any, anyone o, 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 look over the shoulder of that to see if it's correct?
I think it's, I think it's providing for an open form to, for to, for open disclosure and for them to make a determination if they feel it's going to be a conflict of interest. I think it's vitally important that they do disclose that relationship, they didn't make a self-determination along with the rest of the members of the committee of whether or not it's going to be a substantial conflict of interest that may alter their, their vote in any way, shape or form.
I guess I'm asking a what-if question because if city manager, city attorney receives the form filled out by the commission member, is that the end of the hunt? Or do we have a responsibility to look beyond that form and see whether it's accurate?
If we can't trust the ethics commissioners to fill out a disclosure form accurately, I would think that we would have a much more fundamental problem. And my understanding is that these commissioners, like any other appointee, serve at will and can be removed at will for not behaving correctly. And I would have, I totally understand what Mayor Protem Schiff said. We are a small community and that's part of what makes us great is that we do know each other. Knowing each other and even beginning to say best friends and having someone subjectively trying to draw that line, I think that gets a little onerous. But the idea that, what I wouldn't want to do is have one commissioner passing judgment on another commissioner and, and then now we have an ethics issue between two ethics, that seems like we're going in the wrong direction. But a, a form of disclosure, a review by the city manager and the city attorney seem to me to be an appropriate avenue, but I'm, I'm very interested in other council members' comment.
Well, I would think that if you're filling out a form saying that there are potential conflicts, that just by the process, the individual would pretty much identify for himself that he, that he should recuse himself. You know, the fact that he's handing it to you, that just puts it on public record, but I really think you're not going to have to go that far. I think once you, you think about it and you write it down and you say, yeah, you know, this is, I should recuse myself on this one, that, you know, definitely you turn it in, it's, it's on the record and it might be a real minor thing where it's just kind of obvious that it's not a conflict. Yeah, I know the guy, but I know, you know, I know everybody in town, so, yeah, I know him, but I don't really see it as a conflict. I, I think the process will just raise awareness within the individual to determine themselves whether they have a conflict or not.
Okay.
Any other comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, and this is where I think they've made a suggestion about an alternate and this where the alternate would come into play.
I, and I, what I was thinking about is it's all the more reason to go to five so that you don't have, you know, if you're at three and one person has to recuse themselves and you're at two and so the five and an alternate-
But do we really need an alternate if we're allowing our commission to go from five members to four members? We automatically build in, obviously if two people recuse themselves, we, we got a problem. But-
So you're agreeing that you do or do not need an altern-
We do need an alternate.
Okay. And Gary's saying we don't, right?
Well, I-
When you take five out, that means all four now have to be present. So we're back to where we are, whether it's three or four. By having an alternate, you put five in play and four of the five have to show up.
All right. Does that mean that the alternate shows up for every meeting or only if ahead of time you realize that you're going to have a conflict?
If you've got somebody that has recused themselves, they become a member for the purposes of hearing that complaint through its entirety.
Gary's saying, are you asking them to show up to a whole bunch of meetings where they don't get to vote and they're just-
Okay. Then I'm okay with an alternate, but the thought of having an alternate is sitting there at every ethics meeting-
Well, I could give you a real-life analogy. I have a alternate for every single jury trial that I do. When I was a prosecutor for eighteen and a half years, I never had an alternate and we never, and I became a judge and then all of a sudden I had a mistrial on a murder case because I didn't have an alternate and then the very next trial was an aggravated robbery and one person could not serve. I needed that alternate. The legislatures now require us, and I just did this this morning with a, and impaneled a new grand jury, they require us to have four alternates, which, that might work for a real big city, I mean, you need those four alternates. I've needed one alternate for a grand jury in the last eight years, but it was nice to have that and we needed it. So I, I think as long as they don't have to show up to every meeting, they only get plugged in if one does recuse themselves.
Okay. So you don't see in the middle of a, an ethics complaint, oh, that person, all of a sudden, somebody has to recuse themselves and you don't have an alternate? It would be identified ahead of time, so we, that alternate would only come to a meeting if they were really needed.
That's what I'm seeing. And I think that's a very good, quote, insurance policy.
But I would also, if somebody's an alternate and they want to attend the meetings, I, that's, that's their own call, you know, and, and it may be an instance where somebody's going to be rolling off and alternate having been to some of the meetings could be very beneficial to become a full-time member, but I, the onus of coming to a meeting just to go is-
The, the type of person that we're looking for, that basically we're looking for somebody that has the ethics of a judge, you know, uh, ho, you know, I'm thinking of people that probably have a pretty busy life-
It's a schedule.
And would not appreciate sitting through meetings that they really didn't have to, but could if they wanted to. So, and probably should every once in a while to just see the process, but, you know, I don't-
He's our own good judge.
I think so.
Now, you are saying that somewhere we got, there was a comment made that the fellow commissioners should not judge the merits of the disclosure, but they are, they are party, I mean, they are, it is open to them, right?
I think these conflict of interest forms are going to- I think these conflict of interest forms are going to be open record and the court of public opinion will decide.
That's where I was going.
Whether or not there's conflict.
That's where I was going.
Councilmember Jones, are you okay? Any comments? Nelson, Peterson? All righty. Did we give you what you needed, Mr. Bragg?
You sure did. Now, if we can go, we know we're not done. The next part, and you will notice I'm skipping over sections. There are some, most of the changes made in the sections that are intervening are procedural, technical, you know, grammatical, whatever. Here, another substantive change is made, and that is, the city attorney is precluded, has been precluded forever, from being an advisor to the Ethics Commission when the city, managing city attorneys, council members, et cetera, are before the commission, for obvious reasons, due to conflict. But what that did was it left the commission without an attorney to advise them, and it was done because we have two attorneys on the commission and they were very concerned about the expense that the city would incur as a result of hiring an independent counsel. Based on what, through what happened in this last proceeding, though, my recommendation is that we change the language of this section so that if the city attorney is conflicted out, then they must hire an independent legal counsel. That takes the onus off of the commission and not wanting to incur the legal expense, but I think provides them an essential resource that they would not otherwise have.
I'm completely fine with that. Any comments, Judge Dugan?
I wholeheartedly agree. That was really a serious concern for at least myself and other commissioners, the cost of the legal expense of another attorney. But looking back, hindsight is always twenty twenty, I think it's absolutely necessary.
It seems like it's either real simple and it won't be a lot of money, or it's real complicated and it's money well spent. So I don't know how there's a downside to, that's my personal opinion of that.
And I think that the other value of that is a city attorney, an independent person, whoever it is, would be more comfortable coming to the commission and saying, this is a valid complaint, or this is a complaint that has no validity. And based on that, the commission would then be put more in the position of a judge rather than feeling like they've got to give everyone their day in court. You know, I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a cleaner process for the commission. So I'm glad...
Counsel, any comments? Is anyone opposed to that? I'm seeing okay's all around.
Okay. One of the changes made in this, in the prior ordinance, you had documents going here, you had documents going there, you know, Judge Dugan brought things over to my office, I brought things over to, you know, because people were just sending stuff everywhere. And so what we tried to do here is make the city secretary the repository of all documents connected with an ethics complaint. And we put some pretty, I put some pretty strong languages in there, and that is if you don't file it with the commission, or with the city secretary, if you don't serve the other products of this thing with that document, the commission can't consider it in order to make sure that everybody has everything everybody else has and to make sure that it's all sensibly located with the city secretary. I don't, maybe Judge Dugan likes collecting documents.
No. I found myself, and thankfully, you know, sometimes cases cancel, so I was able to copy, I was able to hand-deliver, I emailed, I tried to, whatever was received dispersed to whoever needed to be dispersed to, I hand-delivered it to Mr. Bragg, Mr. Tuck's office, I delivered it over here so city staff could assist me in sending it out. I think it's a wonderful idea. I certainly don't like the idea of dumping work on the city manager, but I would, I think it's much, much more efficient.
I think she'd like to point out that was the city secretary that would be...
Oh, city secretary, I'm sorry.
No, I think that it's important, you know, regardless of how you feel about somebody, their life and their livelihood is at stake. And we put both Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Schiff in a precarious position for a long period of time, and given their livelihood, they have to disclose that they're under an ethics violation. The sooner we can render due process efficiently so that the truth comes out, whatever that is, the better. And so it just makes sense for there to be one place, no confusion, it shows up, there's a date, whatever the case may be, and it is sent out. So that the process works, it works efficiently, everybody's treated the same, and we know that everybody has been treated the same. Because as David says, you have to get it here by a certain time. If you don't, then so be it.
It also nicely reflects back to the values that we did at the very beginning of this workshop, that timeliness was an important thing for all parties and including our citizens.
That's right, and fairness of the process. And this, the other part that I talked about that is, if you don't serve city secretary and the parties involved, the commission cannot consider the documents that's contained in this change, the section 1.15.131. We found in this last proceeding that people were not being served with documents by other people. So that the commission might have something, but the people who were charged did not have it, or vice versa. And so it's, to me, it's important that you make sure that if there's a penalty attached to your failure to tell the other side what it is you've got that you're sending to the commission for them to consider. That way there's an opportunity to respond.
Does anybody have any objection, counsel?
I don't have any objections. I'd just like to place in there, to be served by whom, that I think needs to be on there to ensure that the appropriate person is responsible for disseminating that information. My only suggestion.
Any other comment, counsel?
I see a little spelling error on number three.
It's a C site.
Just as long as you're going through it.
The what now?
At 1.15.131, paragraph A, underneath that three, it says C and then site. That's on the document that we're looking at in our backup.
Oh, the one you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay. Huh. This has been through a number of different...
I'm sure it'll get caught the next time around. No worries.
Okay. This is another major change, major change that I'm recommending, and it's a true policy consideration. Right now, let me begin this by saying there's a question mark over whether the commission has authority to assess attorney's fees, period. I can make a good argument that they should be able to, I can make a good argument that they should not be able to. It's kind of an up in the air thing. I'm assuming for this purpose that they do have that authority to assess attorney's fees. Under the current ordinance, the criteria for assessing attorney's fees is probably among the highest burdens of proof known to the law. You begin up here with beyond a reasonable doubt, then you come down, not too far down, and you have to prove that a complaint not only is groundless, that is, there's no merit to it at all, but also that it was either brought in bad faith or it was brought for the purpose of harassment. Well, if the complaint is groundless, my thinking is, why should someone have to pay to defend against a groundless complaint? So that's why this change is made. If the commission finds first that there was no violation, that's critical, because you can have a complaint brought for the purpose of harassment, that is a valid complaint. But they can find first that there's no violation. Then, if they find it is groundless as a matter of law, or filed in bad faith, or filed for the purpose of harassment, under any three of those, they can assess attorney's fees. Again, there must first be a finding of no violation.
You know, one of the things I'd like to see added, I think that's good, and I think one of the things I'd like to see added where it says filed in bad faith, I'd like that to be expanded upon, to be not only filed in bad faith, but if it's found to be continued in bad faith. All right? And the reason I say that is if, if you make a complaint and you don't have all the facts and you don't know that your complaint pretend, is groundless, let's say, and you proceed in, moving on with that complaint with the Ethics Commission, and then you find out you didn't have all the facts, and you're informed of what the facts are, and you have adequate evidence that the case is really groundless. You didn't know it, you didn't file it in bad faith, but you found out later that it was groundless, but then you didn't withdraw your complaint. I think there should be a time period, it should say, if you either file in bad faith or if you find that the, your complaint is groundless, within seven days after you're notified in writing of the evidence that shows that it's groundless, that then they can assess the complaint, the complainer, legal fees to the other person.
I agree. And I think even another point to be made, that I don't think it's the commission's responsibility to find facts. If you're going to file a complaint, you have to have facts. You just can't file a complaint because you feel like it, it's valid. There has to be, there have to be facts to support your position. Any comments, Judge Dugan?
Not really. I actually, I don't have a problem, but it's sort of a failure to withdraw, hot learning that the, your complaint is groundless, the failure to withdraw the complaint in a timely manner, or the seven-day...
I'll use my example. I submitted absolute certified evidence that I was authorized to do what I did, which was the basis of the complaint, and the complainer did not know originally that, that I was authorized to do it, because she wasn't at the meeting. She was absent that, that week. But once she got the information, she refused to withdraw the complaint for a long period of time until like the very end, just before the ethics meeting, she said, okay, I'll withdraw the complaint. Well, I'm under all this duress and legal battles and just unnecessary, unnecessary duress for six weeks of time after she knew that I was authorized to do what I did. So, you know, I think...
Because you brought up that example, I, if you don't mind, I'd like, what disappoints me in that is if it's undeniable proof that it is now groundless, I guess I'm lost on why the Ethics Commission wasn't able to step in and bring a closure to that. And are we missing something else in the ordinance that would have allowed that? Because I, I think what y'all are saying is those papers should be filed with the city secretary, right?
That's what I'm saying is, to me, I'm not going to speak for the Ethics Commission for ruling the way they ruled, but if I had to make the ruling, I would have made the ruling that it was not made in bad faith. Because when she made it, she just didn't know. She did not know, and I give her that. But I figured it all out and said, oh, you weren't at the meeting. Here, here's what happened at the meeting. Here's a affidavit from our city manager stating, this is what we authorized Schiff to do, which is what I did, and it should have cleared the whole thing up, but it didn't. And that, if we wrote that in here, then the Ethics Commission, right now, they, in the old rulebook, they couldn't say that it was made in bad faith because it wasn't.
Yeah, that, that's the reason for the addition of the language here. Original language says brought in bad faith or for the purpose of harassment and groundless as a matter of law. And to find groundless as a matter of law is one thing, to go further and find that it was brought in bad faith or for harassment is a more difficult problem they had with that original thing. I understand what you're saying, and if there's consensus on the council that it should be expanded to failing to withdraw, I'm going to need to massage that language because failing to withdraw after you become aware that you filed it in bad faith obviously makes no sense. So I've got to fix the right paragraph.
Yeah, yeah, it's not after you, you know, it's not that you've done it in bad faith. You really haven't done it in bad faith. It's in hindsight, you realize, I was wrong.
And that would be, that would be fixing.
And maybe that is covered by the groundless. Yeah, okay.
I would change the language of number one, but then probably leave two and three the way they are, because there's not going to...
Right. No, 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 no. Yeah, 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 no, I think, I agree. I agree. So anyhow, I think it's, you can fix that. That would be good.
Judge, can I ask you a question? We're using fact as if fact is obvious, evident, and always available. And using a sexual harassment complaint as a he said, she said, both folks think they're telling the absolute truth. But I've learned that people don't let fact get in the way of their fiction. And five people can be in a room, see five different things, tell five different stories, put their firstborn up for collateral and swear they're telling the truth and see something completely different. How, how does this play out? I'm just curious. Because I don't disagree that there has to be a balance in the system, but there also is federal regulation called a whistleblower status, because at some point in time, you need people to want to be able to say that there's something wrong in the system. It's part of the accountability we owe the public. And if we work it real hard to make it punitive penalties or whatever, so that the public says, I just don't want to get in that, so be it, we failed the system. So I'm curious with words fact, and I'm curious with groundless and some of that, how would you process that information so that we don't make sure that we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater here?
I think, once again, it, sorry, waking up everybody. It's on a case-by-case basis. You look at every case in and of it by itself, what are the facts present? And then it's what I do on a daily basis. Here are the facts, here is the statute, if you will. Do these facts plug into this statute? And then you make your determination there. It, it's very difficult sometimes because the facts, if you're not sure, using the criminal situation, if you have a doubt, a reasonable doubt as to what happened, as to any of the factors, any of the elements of a crime, then somebody has to be found not guilty. You look at that, I guarantee the commission will follow whatever statute ordinance that the council passes. And it's really hard to say, well, what about this? Because every situation is very, very fact-specific. If hypothetically speaking, you have a situation where somebody brings a complaint and then they receive additional information that, oh, that is not exactly right, it's, that's not the situation, and they continue it, to me, that dovetails right into number two right there. That is filed in bad faith. If you don't have all the facts, Councilmember Jones, you just said, if you don't have all the facts, that pretty much leans to filed in bad faith. And then if you continue it, even after being told, and you're hypothetical, that it was authorized, continued, then that even, that tells me personally, it definitely was filed in bad faith. And so if the commission were to find, under that language, proposed language right up there, first of all, you have no violation, you find out that there's no violation. And then to me, you almost really don't need to, if you didn't withdraw it after finding out that you had incorrect information and you continued that, to me, that really goes into this complaint was filed in bad faith. So you almost don't need it because that, that is a factor. If somebody finds out about something that was not true, they failed to withdraw the complaint, to me, that is, that really heavily weighs the scale in the filed in bad faith category.
So this brings up a couple of questions for me. Wasn't there some sort of vetting process that we had at the beginning when somebody filed a complaint? Instead of going straight to sixty miles an hour, it was looked at before it was submitted, which would have alleviated that? So there's sort of a couple of things in play. And then the other thing that, and I do have a list of things that citizens had brought up, and the other thing is, and Linda touched on this, and that is that you don't want to have people afraid to file complaints because it's going to cost them a bunch of money. You know, it's like you're going to get... "You're gonna get penalized. If you file this complaint, and you're not right, you know, you're gonna have to pay." So, uh, you know, and then that just opens a whole can of worms, because let's say you file against a city employee, it's handled through the manager, and I don't know that you bring in counsel for all that, or there is counsel, or are you billed for that in-house counsel?
Well, the more-
You know, so two questions.
The, the, the first question is answered by one of the prior members, and that is, to make sure that the commission has, uh, independent legal counsel from the get-go.
Right.
And that independent legal counsel's job is what the city attorney's job would be, that is to vet the complaint, uh, and see, is there a legal basis for the complaint? Uh, early on, uh, I made, in my own mind, a determination, there was no legal basis for the complaint about talking outside of the executive session. But I couldn't advocate that position to anybody, 'cause I had a conflict of interest. And so, an independent counsel would've been able to advocate that position, give it to the commission, show the reasoning, see whether they would agree or not do. So the number, the first one's been taken care of. The second one, I'm torn. Uh, yes, I want people to feel like they, uh, can file complaints. Uh, an ethics complaint is, to me, uh, you're drawing both guns and firing on both barrels. That's the big gun, is when you file an ethics complaint. Short of that, and a, a board member, which are the ones we're really talking about, a board member or a city council member, can go to others and talk, and say, and try to resolve this thing, you know? If I'm on P and Z, and I think one of the members has sold out to somebody, I can go to the other four members and talk to them, and say, "This is, you got a problem here," you know, and resolve it that way. And then if it doesn't work, then take it up further. Uh, so I, I'm kinda like the idea of making it difficult for someone to reach for that ultimate weapon, because of the pain that it can cause, and the embarrassment it can cause, when it may turn out there was nothing to it.
So we have a step one, step two, basically? Is that outlined in this? Because that's what it sounds like we might need, is step one, you do this. If you get no resolution, then there's step two. Step three is an ethics violation? Or is that just gonna be an understanding?
I, I think it'd be an understanding, 'cause I wouldn't wanna tie it down to that. There may be instances where it is perfectly appropriate to go straight to the Ethics Commission. Uh, and then again, there may be others where it's not. I wouldn't wanna build in hurdles to get there. But I do think it's important that if someone files a complaint, or continues to pursue a complaint that is groundless, that they understand that there will be a price attached to that, and they need to, you know, take that into consideration. Um, that's just, I'm, I'm-
That's fine.
This is policy for y'all, not for me.
Could you define something, uh, not being a logger, and this is probably a dumber than a stump question, but could you define groundless as a matter of law for me? I know what groundless means to me, but as a matter of law?
There's a, no, the definition I'm gonna give you is not gonna sound like a definition, but it, it, basically, a, a case is groundless when there's no arguable basis in law or fact. That means zip over. I mean, if you've got something that sounds plausible, it's not gonna be groundless. You know, it's, it's a tough burden, that it's no arguable basis in law or fact. There may be a better definition of-
Let's carry on with this definition side. Define, in the context of this conversation, can you define bad faith?
No. Uh, it's, it's a subjective term. Uh, I'm, I'm not aware, is there any definition of bad faith?
I'm not aware, but, and to use our example, uh, you have insufficient facts. You've received facts. You still don't withdraw the complaint. Uh, that's going, you file this in bad faith, and, and, and it's, you know, that's pretty much for a purpose of harassment, too, because you let it hang, even after you received the additional information. Uh, going back, Councilmember, to your first step, is, I, I believe, Mr. Bragg is exactly right. The first step is, couns- uh, the commission gets independent counsel. That person, he or she will then vet or screen the complaint. And so that is a, in my mind, a very necessary first step. And that, that way, that whoever he or she is, that independent counsel says, "This is, this doesn't even reach, it doesn't even get to the commission," boom, it's kicked out.
So back to another question that hasn't been answered, is fact. I mean, you just come go, "I feel like this is happening. I feel like that this is a problem." I mean, don't you have to have a fact, an incident?
You, you do, in order to have a complaint to which you're gonna sign your name in, in an affidavit format.
Which would be vetted?
Which would be vetted, and that, uh, independent counsel would screen it and say, "There, there's no facts here. Kick it out, it's dismissed."
I think because we, we have one instance in this city, that's what we're focused on. Um, I have experience in others where it's not this crisp or this clean. Um, it's pretty safe to say, when you have council members filing ethics violations on each other, you don't have a harmonious get-along, "We're gonna have Sunday lunch together," kind of-
No kumbaya.
No. Life's not happy at City Hall. Um, and, and we all know, and it does, size is irrelevant. I, I have worked in large cities, I have worked in small cities. The grapevine and the power is limited to the same number of people regardless of size. There's just more people to count. But at the end of the day, power perception grapevine always works within a small number of folks. And with time and left unchallenged, mystique kicks in. And fact becomes irrelevant, because when you say something enough, you begin to believe it. And so I'm hung up on how crisp we want life to be with fact. Um, I have been involved in some, uh, not me personally, but as interim city manager, been in a situation where the city attorney spent months trying to determine the mystique to a point, to determine what the fact versus fiction was, because it was a tangled web that had been weaved. So, I hear the conversation, but I, my, my, my history tells me, it's not always gonna be this clean. It's not always gonna be this crisp. But when it gets that convoluted at City Hall, I'm back to, "We owe the public open and transparent government" that they're not getting. So the process has always got to be where time gets to the truth to the extent truth can be determined. Sometimes we're gonna walk away with, "To the best of our knowledge, this is probably what happened." But there are a lot of cases, I'm sure you've tried as a judge, that there's no answer. You just think you know what happened. You hope that's what happened. But we don't know. And so I just really wanna put this cautionary tale, because ethics are never gonna be black and white. It's gonna be a lot of gray matter. And we've got to make sure that the tension in the system doesn't keep one side or the other, the wrong or the right, from participating in the process, because when it gets to this point, chances are, it's not gonna be, um, nice, and it might not be as crisp as what had happened here. Because my history has shown me that that's not always the case.
If every case was absolutely crystal clear, we wouldn't need a commission. We could have one person.
That's right.
You don't need a commission to figure out black and white. You need a commission to figure out gray. And so, hopefully, we're selecting the right people that can filter all this information and determine, is it, is it, is it black or is it white? Or, you know, is it darker, is it lighter? You know, which side of gray? And, you know, because we have lawyers and judges on, uh, lawyers who are judges on our commission right now, uh, I think they're used to dealing with grays. And I expect for them to sort through it, and to come up with answers based on, on gray information.
Is the fact that you're an attorney a criteria to be appointed to this board?
Well, you know, no, it, it is not. And obviously, that can change.
So if it is, it should not be, then I'm back to where I started, with all due respect, sir. We've got to provide enough due process and enough clarity, that I don't need to be an attorney to figure out fact from fiction, and be able to say, "We're not gonna satisfy folks." Because at the end of the day, that really is what sometimes comes from this, is we're gonna just have to all agree, we don't like the answer. But to the best of our ability, these are the set of truths that came forward.
Um, I, do you have a better system? Well, we-
No, I'm just, I, 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 I'm, my role here is just to make sure that we don't fall off the horse to the other side. And I have an analogy that says, "Sometimes we fall off the horse to the right." So what we do is, we write policies in that instance, to ensure we fall off the horse to the left, when the whole point of the exercise is to right the horse. So anytime we spend too much time dissecting what has happened, the past is not anyway a prescription to the future. And I'm just raising the banner to keep the levity in the system, to make sure we don't inadvertently fall off the horse to the other side, and have to come back and rewrite it. That's it.
And I wanted to make, just for clarity, bring up one other thing. We're talking about independent counsel, but that is only when the city attorney is conflicted out.
Right.
So from a citizen saying, "Wait a minute, something does not smell right here," or "I saw something," or "I thought I saw something," or "I heard," you know, "I witnessed something in a meeting that just didn't add up to me." If they file the complaint, and the city attorney is not conflicted out, the city attorney will vet that, and if it's found to be, there's, there's no here, here, and oh, by the way, here's the other fact that you didn't know because you haven't been at all four meetings or whatever, th- this will be taken care of, and there will be no, we won't be at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that, that should be correct. That should, it should operate that way. One thing I, I, I hesitate to say this, 'cause it sounds like I'm wholly lacking in morals, which could be the case.
Rumor has compared that with a truth.
I have found truth to be an elusive concept. Uh, and therefore, in the law, all I am concerned with, and all the judge is concerned with, is what can you prove? What facts can you prove? Who knows what the truth is? You know, I wasn't there. And so I've taken a similar approach here. It's not so much the pursuit of the truth, 'cause we'll never know that, but have they put forward enough facts to say, "This is a legitimate complaint?" And the advantage to having a lawyer on the commission is he doesn't suffer from that moral affliction of believing, you know? But I agree with you, there's absolutely no requirement that you have that. But that really is the perspective. What, what have you proven not, what's the truth of what happened?
So with the, with the changes that we've discussed this evening, moving forward, whether it's, um, a city council person, whether it's a citizen, whoever it is, that feels an, an onus that they need to file a complaint, back to, um, Councilmember Jones' point, there will be either a city attorney or an independent counsel that will review that complaint. And if they are moving forward at that point, it seems to me like this becomes, this won't really be going on, because somebody's found it to have grounds, or they haven't moved forward with it.
Right. Yeah, the city attorney has independent ground, has independent authority to conduct investigations of wrongdoing. And so there's another layer of protection before a person has to resort to filing with the commission. But anyway, uh, I, I think I'm running out of time. Uh-
Well, so our, I want us to make sure, we haven't had this long conversation, but where do we stand on this? Is, is everyone comfortable with the language that you see in front of you? Or are you wanting to revise it, or you wanna think about it? Comment.
Councilmember, I'm gonna look at definitions of bad faith and harassment. I'm not familiar with any right off the top of my head, but I'm gonna see if I can find some.
Well, the harassment's gonna be fairly easy. We can, we can, we can, I think I've already defined it somewhere in the, in these, uh, ethic draft. But the, bad faith and just leave it open to, to subjectivity, I thi- I think it's opening up a can of worms that we're not gonna get into.
I'll see what I can find. There are a ton of cases dealing with bad faith, so hopefully one of them will define the subject at, at some point. Otherwise-
Yeah, anybody else, any comments? You wanna make sure Mr. Bragg hears?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I need something more.
All of them. Column, we lost it.
Ah, there you go. Uh, this is the sanctioned part. And this is, uh, and this is where I kinda ask the question, "Are you sure you wanna do that?" Uh, the, there, in the redline version, there are some, uh, changes made that are procedural, that are simply there to clarify things. But I wanna draw your attention to the very last sentence. "In addition, the Ethics Commission's written recommendation on sanctions shall be delivered to the city secretary, published in a local newspaper of the largest general circulation, and published prominently on the city's website for a minimum of twelve months after the decision is issued." I can't think of a harsher sentence other than tar and feather. And is that really what you wanna do? Uh, that's the policy issue.
I think, once a decision's been issued, issued, I don't know why we publish it for twelve months, or even a, a week. I mean, the press is gonna cover it, and every time, the one thing I'm seeing about our press is they love to rehash, so I don't think it's ever gonna go away. So-
And this was in the original ordinance, and Judge Dugan, I don't know if you remember the origin of that language, uh-
I don't.
Um, but that's the policy issue that-
I, I would think you'd want the, whatever the complaint, it needs to be resolved. So if some, you know, if someone has to be removed from office, if they need to be pulled from a commission, if they need to make restitution, I would hope that when the commission makes their judgment, that there's a, this is, this is how you are made, made whole. And maybe it's, um, you know, if you're on planning and zoning, and you're wheeling and dealing and voting on the same deal, and that gets brought forward, perhaps you're not a good planning and zoning candidate in the, in the future. But that doesn't mean that it needs to be published in papers for a year.
Well, I agree.
I think it was just published in the paper at least once, but published on the city's website for twelve months. Now, I know, uh, when there are actions, uh, the Commission on Judicial Conduct, when they, um, find that judges do something wrong or unethical, it's published forever. It's on their website. It goes back for years. Um, so, I don't know, I'm trying to remember if we, on the task force, when, I don't know how many years ago that was, um, we were trying to weigh, how long should it be on the website? Because once again, um, if there is, if it, I wanna, I seem to recall, if there is a violation, then obviously it goes back to the transparency of letting people know, "This is what the situation, this is what the ..." But, um, I, you know, once again, I'm gonna default back to, we will certainly, you know, I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I think it, if something is as serious as an ethics violation, and that violation is found to be true, um, I think the public has a right to know that. Um, but, um, you know, I, I'm certainly able to defer to the council, as to whatever y'all want in that situation.
My feeling is that, uh, the court of public opinion, once it's, uh, published in the local newspaper, which we all know will happen, uh, I don't see any, even any need, we can publish the finding on the website, but it doesn't need to stay there for twelve months. The, the bottom line is, we're dealing with citizens here who are either elected to office or appointed to office, that are, are essentially gonna be covered by this. And once this happens, like the mayor said, the council defines whether they need to stay in the position they are, if they're a board or commission. And then it's up to future councils and the electorate to define whether they, uh, are in the office again.
Getting beyond just the person that's going to have to deal with the outcome of this, why would you want to advertise to the public, the economic development community, your developers, and people that you would like to move to your community, that you're less than trustworthy? So that the first thing that they see on your website is that, "Well, you need to be concerned about doing business with us."
Right. I agree with Mr. Bragg. Let's just do the tar and feather, and not worry about the newspaper for twelve months.
Once it gets out in public record, it's searchable forever. I mean, there was a time when that wasn't the case, but with the world wide web, I mean, if it's out there for any length of time, it'll be there permanently.
Well, there was two different readings that I took. One of them's published in the local newspaper, as well as published on the city's website. It's a matter of public record. It's a matter of public records, one of the website anyway. I think removing the word prominently might be advisable.
Well, and what we could do, I mean, if, the sense I'm getting, maybe I'm getting the wrong sense, is basically to strike that last phrase about putting it on the website for 12 months. Just strike that and rely on the newspaper publication, as well as open records and all of that to provide the information to avoid the problem when this topic...
I agree. Yeah, I think, and I think the city manager's making a good point. And what we want people to know is, you know, we're not all perfect because we're all human. But when we have a problem, it's addressed in a timely manner, it's resolved, and we move on.
Yes.
That's, that's what we, I think, that's what we all want and what our citizens deserve. And it, it shouldn't be that the commission found someone had fault, but no one can find out what happened or if it was resolved. We, we need to have some clarity when there's a problem, that we fixed it, and if there was a problem and it wasn't really a problem, which we've taken care of with the vetting and with the response.
And it's a part of your values. Ethics Commission's going to be an open meeting. If there is a problem with somebody, then the expectation of the community is, is it will be addressed. And I don't know that how it gets addressed is needed in this document because if they're an employee of the council, then under the charter, you have full authority to take whatever action you deem appropriate, up to and including removal. If, to your point, they are a board or commissioner and they are appointed at will, that gets remedied quickly. And I don't believe there is a charter provision for removal of a council member, but there is recall provisions in the petition, and we have elections every May. So I'm not sure additional action is required because everybody that needs to be dealt with, there's already authority somewhere else for the people needing to address it to have the authority to do so.
Is everybody okay?
That's where I was going. The end.
Yay. Did you, Councilmember Jones, you said you had some other questions. Are you satisfied?
Well, I just have one more question that a citizen asked me. And that is, there's a, I think that, did we make it, there's a six-month limit to file? What if something comes forward or there's a piece of information that's provided outside of that six months? Does that constitute an exception? I don't know what that would be. That's just the question I was asking.
Basically, they're applying the discovery rule, it's called a discovery rule, to avoid the six-month limitation. You easily can build that into it. And, you know, unless the information was not, and could not reasonably have been discovered within the six-month period, then it doesn't...
Okay, well, we could have some sort of provision for that. So, and this is more for citizens, you know, if there's something that happens and there's something that's overturned that they, that they see as an issue, that gives them an opportunity to bring that up, but anyway.
The unintended consequence of a time limit is you allow something to fester in the community, and people get beat up with a brush that they particularly would not like, would appreciate their day of court, and the statute of limitations prevents that. That's the other side of that argument. Some people say, "Well, if you haven't gotten it in six months, then you can't bring up bad blood." That's fine, but if it takes nine months for something to come out, and I would like my day in court, I've been denied that, haven't I?
So that's the discovery rule, right?
I think the discovery rule cures that by saying, "If you did not discover and could not, in the exercise of reasonable diligence, have discovered, then you're not bound by the six months."
And then again, that would be vetted by either the city attorney or a third party to say, "Okay, that, that is reasonable, that you, that it took you six months and two days, and this really is an issue and it should be expressed." Or, "No, now we're, we're hunting, and we don't need to be hunted."
I'll let it be.
That's just, I think you answered your question. Thank you.
I'll let it be.
Any other council members, any comments? Judge Dugan, words of wisdom for us?
I just want to say thank you to the council. I, I appreciate this workshop, even coming here on my birthday back in June.
It's your birthday again. How many birthdays do you have?
I celebrate every month. But I, I do appreciate the whole council, the mayor and the council, and the Bragg and the city manager of working on this. You know, we did the best job that we could when we had the task force. But I really, you know, just sitting over here, I was thinking, how much I appreciate the, the spirit of working on this and trying to make it a better ordinance. I really do appreciate it all. And the citizens.
Yeah, I was, thank you very much. What a great segue. I appreciate the citizens being here, and we did post this for citizen comment, and I want to make sure that we've given everyone here ample time to make any comments. Does anybody have any? Please come to the microphone and form a line. We're happy to hear from you.
Linda Curtis here. I just have a question, really, because Mr. Bragg, you were speaking real low, so I couldn't hear you real well. On the discovery rule, can you explain that again? Is it, because right now in the ordinance, I think it says a year. And I appreciated the city manager's comment about this, but I didn't quite hear yours. So the discovery rule, if I find out something at nine months, and, and you've moved the deadline from a year to six months, correct?
Right.
What happens? Is it actually in the, is it going to be in the ordinance, explaining to me as a citizen if you find out about this?
Right. As Councilmember Jones said, and I agree with her entirely, the, I'll add a discovery rule language, which says that if you did not and could not, in the exercise of reasonable diligence, have discovered whatever it is, then the six months doesn't bar your complaint. Now, that's a standard discovery rule used in civil law, and it's intended to prevent a claim from being able to escape simply by the passage of time.
But it could be even a year or two later?
True.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I apologize that I haven't been at all the meetings. I've been out of the country during one of them. On Mr. Schiff's 1.15131, just to, I don't want to expand any more discussion on that, but there is a apparent lack of being able to obtain evidence. You may see something that appears to be unethical. And if you're in a lawsuit, you get to file interrogatories or you can take deposition. And it may be that you are very concerned about something, and, and the concern I have is that the ethics methodology should be a short version that, you know, someone sees something, it's vetted. Otherwise, as city manager Humboldt knows, you'll get city council members suing each other in court, whereas the full range of the legal remedies are available. You can take deposition, you can do interrogatories, and really run up legal bills, which you may not have to pay in a, in a court seat. So if you make it more difficult in the ethics commission, which should be a, a expedited methodology to resolve issues that appear to be unethical, then you may force people into the legal system, and then you really get unreimbursable legal expenses, perhaps. The, the other comments, and I will probably expand on these comments in written form before action is taken on other matters. On 1.15002, city manager will take care of all ethics complaints against employees that report to her, and that's fine. I, I think it ought to be said in there that it will be handled pursuant to, as I understand it, I, I saw the, the movie, or the, the June 23rd video, pursuant to the human relations or the personnel policy.
Yes, sir.
That ought to be added so that the citizen who looks at that doesn't, I mean, we've got very fine city employees, but they ought to have the assurance that there is a methodology, and it ought to be available on the webpage of what that is. I looked today, and I could not find anything, the personnel policy or anything like that. So, and, and the second point on that is, no matter what we do, or what y'all do, what you vote on, they're going to file an ethics complaint with the ethics commission. And the question then is, what does the ethics commission do with one that ought to be going through the city manager? My recommendation would be that the ethics commission is authorized to transmit it directly to the city manager for her resolution under her policy, rather than the citizen getting a response from Chairman Dugan saying, "We don't have any jurisdiction, so here's your, here's your piece of paper back."
It should be vetted by the city attorney, or if the city attorney is conflicted out, then the independent counsel. So that, that would be step one. They would look, can the commission even hear it? And it goes straight to the city manager.
Well, I, I think it needs to be made clear that that's what will, will happen, so that when this, when the citizens read 1.15002, they don't say, "Well, you know, what do I do?" That's just a minor comment. The other, the other one was the issue of, the sit out period. Now, there's a long, you know, almost a half a page about appointment relating to suit contract, and then the last line says, "City council, city manager can void that." And there ought to be some language, I think. This is 1.15062, which talks about, you know, the former city official or employee shall not, within two years of termination, the official duties perform work on a compensating basis. And it goes into long detail about that, but then the last sentence says, you know, the city council can not do that. And, and it, it, obviously, there, there may be reasons, but I'd, I'd like some language that in a, you know, some sort of extreme, you know, if there's, if someone has moved off the city council who is the expert in this area, or the former city attorney is the expert in this area of the law, there ought to be some standard that's more than just, you know, if we vote three to two, we can void the ethics ordinance that says, "You don't work for the city for two years after you leave, uh, leave the city."
I can explain the reason for this, and there may be a better way to do it. I, I call this the Marvin Townsend Amendment, for the reason that, at the time, city man, the new city manager was hired, there were three pending matters on which Mr. Townsend had spent a huge amount of time, and that would have required the new city manager to reinvent the wheel. And so that's why the decision was made to continue, to put this in here, to make it legal to hire someone like Marvin, so that he could continue and complete projects that were begun that, that are interrupted midstream.
And, and I, I expect that that was the reason for that. And I can, there could be some language about a, a former city manager who's engaged in illegal, legal actions that are ongoing can be retained by the city attorney to continue that work and field of resolution. Something extraordinary, other than, you know, if, if three to two vote, we get to hire the, the former city manager to do something like that.
Well, I disagree with making it too specific, just like what Linda said. I mean, you can't just take past experience and say, "Well, that's happened, so let's put that in there." I think that you have to have some trust in the fact that you've got officials up here, we have open meetings, it has to be justified, it has to be set forth, and I think that that language is perfectly acceptable.
It may be, may be a super majority required, or city manager requires that the council says, "Yeah, that's obviously..." Most of your votes are unanimous anyway, so, but just something that, because somebody reached this and says, "Well, it doesn't mean anything to, to have a restriction for former and, you can't be employed." I, I've got a comment, I won't take more of the time, I'll, I'll put it in the line.
I appreciate that, because we're, we only have a few minutes left, but I think there was one more person that wanted to speak. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
This is a fine point, quick. It's under sanctions, 1.15.134 of Judy Hoover. The last sentence where, says the ethics commission may, in its discretion, issue a clarifying opinion to help guide future cases. Seems like to me it would be a real good idea for the commission to do that period. So I don't know that you want to say, "Shall," and tell the commission what to do, but it seems like if you want to deter filings, or not necessarily deter, but at least set forth a precedent for things that are acceptable, that make sense, kind of help the public understand what the ethics commission is dealing with.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying just take out the "in its discretion" and don't make it discretionary, make it a, if you guys have heard a case and made a finding, give us some kind of guidance.
So it says, "Ethics commission may issue a clarifying..."
Or "shall."
Or "shall."
"Shall."
What does a judge think about that?
What paperwork?
I, I certainly, speaking for myself, if it is something that I believe there should be a clarifying, I would rec, I would going to. We're going to lean very heavily on the, we're going to do this to try to explain this decision. You know, it's hard to say, if you do "shall," then you have to do it on every single one.
We, it's an open, again, it's an open meeting, and it's at your discretion.
It's an open meeting, we are going to be...
When there's question, those can be brought forth, and so I, I really hesitate to make demands.
I said that in the beginning. I hate to put a "shall" on a, on ethics, but just a point for, for consideration.
Well, it is going to be open, and we're, I know personally, I will, i- i- in our discretion, if we think it needs to be done, it'll be done. So at least I would recommend it.
You'll leave it as it is.
And my second, I, I just have a question about the limitations on application of the ethics ordinance. There's a lot of verbiage in here about employees, and yet it clearly says that this does not apply to anyone who answers to the city manager. So who does not answer to you who is employed?
I am an employee that answers to the city council. So there will be clarifying language that if it's anyone that answers to me, we'll deal with it through the personnel policy. And I think Mr. Johnson brought up some very good language. We need to provide a conduit on the website, so people understand that there's a policy and all of that. But I am considered an employee of the city, but I work for the city council. So we're going to have to clean that up, so that the council has jurisdiction over me, and then the personnel policy through HR has jurisdiction over the employees.
Who else do we have? Don't we have jurisdiction over the city attorney and the city secretary?
I'm not, I'm not an employee.
And the city judge. But there are four appointments made by council. Municipal judge, the city attorney, the city manager.
The secretary.
No, I appoint, you confirm. She works for me.
Okay. But you, you were at four, and we didn't get there?
That's what I'm, it's four in every city that I've been to, and it could be the city secretary's the process, the problem. So it's three, the city manager, the city attorney, and the, and the city judge.
Ms. Hoover, I think you've brought up a very clear point that we'll need to clarify who indeed is covered and how that's defined.
That language is in there, because for some reason, it's in the charter. And, and so I went ahead and stuck it in there because it's in the charter, but other than, I wouldn't even think about me, other than Linda.
We've got lots of people out there. Do you have, is that, I, I want, but I do want to give you time. Anything else? Any, anybody else? I'm calling a recess to the workshop, and we'll be reconvening as soon as we can all get up front.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. We were taking care of some really important business, and I know we have lots of folks in the audience tonight. So it is 6:34. I'm calling this meeting to order. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on an, any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The city of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. If you have an agenda in front of you, we are at item number three. We are very happy to have Mia Hernandez, who is the president, and Rolando Benevitas, who is the parliamentarian for Bastrop High School National Honor Society. These two are seniors, so I'm sure they're flexing their senior muscle around town at this point. Mia is headed to Stanford, is her hope, and Rolando is headed to the University of Texas, Go Longhorns. So if you will please stand, we will, they will lead us in the pledge. So if you will please stand, they will lead us in the pledge. Mia and Rolando?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And if you will please remain standing, Reverend Newman will come forward and lead us in the invocation tonight. Reverend Newman?
My name is Stephen Newman, pastor in the Christian Church Disciples of Christ, and before moving here, we lived in Danville, Indiana. In Danville, Indiana, they invited me to attend a board meeting and a council meeting. I came down, and there must have been a thousand people at that meeting. All of them felt like they were speaking for God. They all spoke, and spoke, and spoke. After that, I said I might come down to give the invocation, as long as I'm excused right after that. Will you join with me as we pray to our God? Most mighty heavenly Father, who has created heaven and earth, we praise you for the gifts that you have bestowed upon us. We ask your blessing to be upon our mayor, to give her wisdom and courage, to be with our city manager, to give her a direction to go. With all those council members and all others gathered here, that they may come together as one and lift up what your will is for the city of Bastrop. We know we have so much to be thankful for in the past, but we believe we have a rich future coming up. Help us all to strive towards that. Thus we pray, in Jesus' holy name and for his sake. Amen.
Thank you very much, Reverend Newman. Okay, we are on 5A. Receive a presentation from Kevin Berry, environmental enforcement investigator for Bastrop County regarding Bastrop County Household Hazardous Waste Program.
Mayor and council, we are honored this evening to have with us Commissioner Clara Beckett. Commissioner Beckett reached out to me a couple of months ago. The county has joined forces, I believe with Lee County and the city of Smithville, regarding household hazardous waste, and the county has graciously extended an offer to us to join that program. That is a very important program, particularly if you have ever had household hazardous waste that you wanted to do something with and couldn't. So, in the spirit of preparing for the budget, Commissioner Beckett suggested that Kevin Berry come this evening and give us a presentation, and I just want you to know that it will be in the budget that I bring forward to you this, in August. But the city's portion for this will be $3,000 this first year, and I think, based on citizen participation and all of that, we'll do some true-up perhaps for next year, but not to steal any more of Kevin's thunder. Want him to walk through this program, but I wanted to give you some perspective as to why he's even here this evening, but this is a very important new program that the county has graciously offered to make available to the citizens of Bastrop. So with that, please continue.
I have a couple of handouts for you here. Well, like you said, you covered most of it, but I'll hit the high points again. My name's Kevin Berry, I'm the environmental investigator for Bastrop County. I am also the facility and project manager for the Bastrop County Household Hazardous Waste Facility, which I will abbreviate to letters from now on, because it's too much to, it's a mouthful. And that's why I'm here tonight. With me, like you said, is Precinct Two Commissioner Clara Beckett. In December 2015, a partnership of Bastrop County, Lee County, and the city of Smithville applied for a grant from CapCOG. In March of 2016, we were awarded a grant of $41,792. This grant was to cover most of the initial expenses, like the buildings and concrete slab. The grant money has been used up, and we still have initial expenses that are being paid for out of the Bastrop County Developmental Services Budget and Commissioner Beckett's Bastrop County Precinct Two Budget. There will be an ongoing expenses, such as disposal fees and supplies, that will need to be paid for also. We are asking that the city of Bastrop join the partnership, so that your citizens can use the facility. Each entity in the partnership will give yearly for their citizens to dispose of their household hazardous waste at the facility. The entities that are partnered right now are Bastrop County, city of Smithville, Lee County, Capital Area Council of Governments, and Texas Commission on Environmental Equality. The Bastrop County Household Hazardous Waste Facility would be located at 109 Taylor Street in Smithville, using part of the Precinct Two yard. We are planning on opening in fall of 2017 and hold collection events quarterly. The facility will recycle and reuse as much as we possibly can. There will be a reuse center on the premises where citizens can get household chemicals, cleaners, and paint for free. What that will be, if we have a container that's three-quarters full or better, and it looks in good shape, we're going to give it away. That way, we don't have to pay to get it disposed, and it's getting reused. Also, the paint will be mixed together into a gray primer, and the citizens could get as much as they wanted of that. Should have put my finger on it.
I believe Judge Poppy referred to that as, it will be Bastrop gray. That will be the known color.
Unfortunately, there'll be a couple of different shades, depending on what colors we get in that time around. But if it's a good can, it's almost full, we're just going to put it on the shelf, that color, so that citizens can use it, and we don't have to pay to have it disposed of, and it gets reused. Household hazardous waste is a growing problem in Bastrop County. Right now, there's no place close where people can take their household hazardous waste. Many people, instead of driving, will simply pour their chemicals or paint down the drain or into the storm sewers, or even just pour it on the ground. This can be bad for various reasons, and we are attempting to stop this. Most people want to dispose of the items properly, but it's too difficult right now. Each of you have a copy of the sign that will be at the collection facility, which has all the stuff on it that we will take and not take. On that sheet is listed the items that we will take and not take. I should have looked at my paper. If there is something that we won't take, we will be able to tell the customer where they can take that item. One example is motor oil. We will not take motor oil, but auto parts stores or Walmart will take the used oil for free. I also gave you a copy of the totals of the household hazardous waste collected at a one-time collection event held in Bastrop County on 5/4/2013. The total weight of household hazardous waste collected in less than four hours was 48,611 pounds, and all of it was disposed of, which we paid for with a grant that we got for that purpose. At our collection events, we will reuse as much household hazardous waste as we can, but there will be chemicals that we have to dispose of that are brought to the facility. To do this, we have to pay an environmental disposal company, who will pick up the chemicals and take them to an approved site for disposal. The operating cost will cover disposal, the containers to put the chemicals in, and personal protective equipment for the workers. We want to make a major and lasting impact on cleaning up our county, and we appreciate y'all considering this, and we're glad that it's on the budget, and we hope that it won't just affect now, that it will affect for a long time, and we hope that it gets better. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berry. Someone have any questions?
Yeah. So on these items that you do not accept, would it be reasonable or possible, or do you have plans on your website to give people instructions on what to do with these items, or how to properly? So if they go to your website, they can see what to do with them?
Yeah, right now, we're going to get a website, we're going, we want to get a Facebook page where I can put all that on there, and I want to make up little flyers, that if somebody has something like motor oil, we say, "Here, take it, this is where you can take it." We want to give them an option of where to take it, other than just be stuffed with a carload of used oil, which I end up getting in the county somewhere on the side of the road, which I would rather not have to deal with it that way.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're now on 5B, one of my favorite parts of the evening, and that is the mayor's report. Because I get asked about the events almost everywhere I go, I'm at 62, as of this evening, I'm at 62. On June 29th, that was kind of a busy day for us. We had a ribbon cutting, we had a Downtown Business Alliance Happy Hour, and then we had a budget workshop. I want to go on record that it was only an hour for me, it was not a happy hour, I did not partake and then come to the budget workshop. Then on Friday, June 30th, it was the Run White and Blue 5K, and I had declared at the last council meeting that I would not be racing, but there was something about getting the number on, and the kids lining up, and so I would not say that I raced, but we did quite a bit of jogging, and I'm thankful to my daughter for jogging with me. That was a fantastic kickoff of the Patriotic Festival, and I did see council member Nelson, and I don't know if it was his first 5K, but he certainly was a participant, and I think had a good time, and I'll let him address that further. Then, of course, the next morning, I was one of the judges at the Pet and Pal Parade. City manager Umla and I were both judges, and we were thankful that Chief Adcock was with us, because he had judged prior, so we were able to use his expertise, and I was able to get an up-close view of my very first Fire Leopard Gecko, and everyone should see one at some point in their lives. The Patriotic Festival was in full swing all day Saturday, and I hope many of you participated in that. The Austin Symphonic Band sounded great, the fireworks were wonderful, and it was just a very, very nice weekend for all of the family to be together. On July 6th, I was a part of the ribbon cutting that we did for Simply Sweet. They have been in business for five years on Main Street, and although I did not sign up to eat a cupcake on video, I did do a video, and if you're wondering, the raspberry lemon cheesecake is the best, so if you're wanting to know the flavor that I like. The Thursday on July 6th was also the Farm Street Opry, and we had a great time, my husband and I went to that. I mentioned last time, my good friend Terry Moore was singing, and we got to hear some Patsy Cline songs, and everyone always enjoys hearing that. On Friday, it was a sad day for all of us in Bastrop County, and at the Farm Street Opry, Judge Poppy paid tribute by playing a song dedicated to Mike Fisher. And on Friday, I attended the funeral for Mike Fisher. I was proud to sit with many of the city staff employees. Council member Peterson was there, I saw council member Ennis, and if others of you were there and I didn't see you, I apologize, but he'll be sorely missed, and I know Commissioner Beckett, well, all of us sorely miss Mr. Fisher, and you could tell the difference that he made to Bastrop County, to Bastrop City and Bastrop County. For upcoming events, on July 13th, there's ribbon cutting, there's some meetings coming up, the library's Big Game Summer Finale Party is July 22nd, and my understanding is even if you haven't been participating in the summer reading program, you are welcome to attend the big fun festival. And our next council meeting will be July 25th, and we will start, prior to that council meeting, we will have the Volunteer of the Year Award, and I would encourage folks to come out and recognize there are a lot of people in this community that give of their time freely, and that's part of what makes Bastrop, Bastrop. So that is the end of my mayor's report, and I think I started this in last time, so council member Jones, do you have anything?
I did the, what I think is the best thing that you can do in Bastrop County, and that's go fishing on the river. I did that a couple of times, and even watched the fireworks from the river, and it was just really fun.
As you all know, we are in the middle of developing a budget for the city, so I'll take my time to urge every one of you to let us know your thoughts about the budget. The things that you read in the newspaper, we need to hear from you. We need to have you come to our budget workshops and listen to the discussions. Our telephone numbers are on the city website, so give us a call, let us know what you think, because that's the only way we can make informed decisions about what you would like to see us do, is hearing from you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
I don't really have anything, but I agree with council member Ennis, that we certainly look forward to getting input from the community on the planning that we've got. We've got a workshop this weekend, and all the budget, the budget planning that we'll be doing. We'll have plenty of meetings, if you want to participate, come and let us, let us hear what you've got to say.
Council member Nelson?
Thank you. I did participate in a 5K run, and I held to my commitment that I wouldn't walk, and I walked the whole thing, and I'm on 12 days of recovery now, so everything's well.
Council member Peterson?
I think everything's been covered. Thank you very much, mayor.
All right, well now, you can turn the page, everybody can turn the page together. We're at 5D, city manager's report. All righty, moving right along, we don't have any work sessions scheduled in the main part of the agenda, so I am now at 7A, and we are going to hear a presentation on copper exceedance and public notification. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, mayor and council. I just want to take a minute before we sent out this notice, and make sure everybody was aware of what's going on. We talked about this some last month, but as part of the corrosion control study and copper exceedance that we had a 90th percentile, we had to go back, and we're going to send out a customer notice, and so I've got a copy here of what this looks like, and then I'll take any questions. So just to make everybody aware, it was an exceedance in copper, not lead, but there's some inflammatory language that makes people nervous when they see it on there. So as we adjust our water sources, and we're moving more towards the Simsboro and away from the alluvial wells, there's going to be some changes in our waters, the scale that, so what we've done is we've hired an engineering firm, CH2M, to do some modeling, and come back and make sure we have some good process controls to manage that as we go through.
What you've passed out says lead, but it's really going to be a copper notice, correct?
That's correct. It is a copper exceedance, but the department, the TCEQ is the lead and copper department, so everything says lead and copper. So we want to make sure that everybody's aware, it's only copper.
I was going to ask a question that I think Mr. Ennis is going to ask, so council member Ennis, do you want to just do it?
Yes, ma'am, I'll lead off, and then if you can fill in the blanks. Our citizenry is going to get this letter from us, right?
That's correct.
And it is in pretty legalese, coming from the TCEQ, as defined language, right?
That's correct.
Is there any way that we could put a cover letter covering it, or accompanying it, that speaks in layman's language, so our folks don't look at it and go, "What in the world are they trying to tell us, and are they not taking care of their business?" I mean, we are taking care of our business, and sometimes when our citizens get these kind of letters, they go, "What, what's going on?"
Yeah, absolutely. I always attach a cover letter, and I usually put my office, my office or my cellphone number on there, so I can explain. I don't usually get a lot of calls, but I do get one or two.
Great.
It just makes everybody feel better to explain it in person, when they hear it from me, so.
Good.
I appreciate that. Anyone else, any questions? Mr. Peterson?
Just a comment, mayor. I want to personally thank Trey in this department, these water people. I happened to just drive around town, and I saw the water department out flushing fire hydrants, and that was very good to see, their exercise in these hydrants. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, just so that it's not lost, one of the things that Trey mentioned is, is that we're doing some process improvements. One of the challenges is every season requires different changes to the process because of the water that we take in and the water that's treated. And so recognizing that that is the challenge, I want to applaud staff for the proactive way that they are trying to alleviate the need for these notices in the future, because as it has been pointed out, when you get this in the mail, you're not quite sure really what you shouldn't be concerned about. So please note that staff takes these very seriously, and is working very diligently to prevent the need from having to do this in the future.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Everybody okay? Thank you. Any other questions? Everybody okay? Thank you very much. Okay, we're now on to 7B here, presentation from organizations applying for fiscal year 2018, community support funding, and I think City Manager, you have some intro comments.
I certainly do. Mayor and Council, we published a schedule that was developed, I think, on or about prior to my arrival, and so what we're doing this evening is honoring the schedule, and the schedule says that all of the organizations that applied have an opportunity to make a presentation. And my disclaimer to all of you presenting is please do not assume that because you're presenting that you've gotten funding, because that's not the assumption. All that is, is that you're presenting information to the city council. Council, I will tell you that we have gotten an overwhelming response, as you can see, from the organizations that are listed. A lot of first timers. We are not through with our budget process, so I am not at a position to share with you available funding. I was on vacation last week, so staff and I have not had an opportunity to sit down and offer anything in the way of a recommendation or anything like that. So I'm going to ask for your indulgence this evening, and that is to simply hear from each of these agencies that are applying. Let them make their presentation to you, knowing that before we adopt the budget, we will bring back to you recommendations, we'll bring back to you totals and all of that, so that we know what to do with the requests before you.
So just so the public knows, if you had, if you looked in the packet, all of the applications are in there. So council has all had access to that information since the packet was posted on Friday. I'm sure that they've all done their very best to review. It's a, it's a quite a bit of information, but we are going to go, for the most part, in alphabetical order, and I don't want you to be surprised if you get a question from a council member, because they do have access to all of the applications. With that, I think we can get started, City Manager. Is that correct? And Mayor Pro Tim Schiff is on active duty at this point, and although we, our hearts go out to each and every one of the applicants, we are going to limit you to three minutes, and that's why I preface this with council has your entire full application. So when I was in business, we called it our elevator speech. You need to hit the high points fast, and so I would encourage you to go to your elevator speech and know that the full depth of information is available to council, and also that they, they might possibly have questions with you. And Mayor Pro Tim will give you 30-second warning, and then he will give you, please stop, there are 16 organizations behind you, and we would be appreciative if you'd be respectful of that time limit. With that, we are ready to hear from the Austin Habitat for Humanity, if there is anyone here to present. And the other thing is I would really encourage you to speak into the microphone, because there are folks at home that want to hear, and it's helpful if you, if you get up close to the microphone.
All right.
And if you please introduce yourself, Mr. Whipple.
All right. Hey, let me get my notes. I'll be quick, I promise. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, City Manager and Councilmembers. My name's Billy Whipple. I'm the Vice President of Construction with Austin Habitat for Humanity. First, I want to start with saying we're very grateful for the partnership we've had for the last few years with y'all in our home repair program. I'm sure y'all have noticed the rising land cost in Bastrop County, and so have we, as we have gotten more inquiries for the need of affordable housing and affordable housing solutions, and we incorporate into our strategic plan for our organization to continue to serve in Bastrop County and Bastrop City Limits. So since 2005, we've done three critical home repairs in the city limits, and since 2016, we've done two new home constructions. One of them, we just finished last month, and Friday she should sign the VA loan and move in this weekend, so we're pretty excited about that. But I do just kind of want to hit on the fact that we are getting more and more inquiries as the years go on. We have 15 to 20 coming out of the county, and a lot of those within the city limits. Our home repair program is focused to serve clients below 60% median family income, and we go in and do critical home repair. Our focus is on making the home safe and healthy. So our latest home repair this past year, we focused on making the home dryer. She had roof problems and didn't have the funds to replace them, so that led to a ton of other issues. So we took the money that we were granted and then leveraged that. We partnered with Combined Community Action for Weatherization. We've also, we will go out there later this year and redo the siding with volunteers. We're going to do painting with volunteers. So we take any dollar given to us, and we can easily triple it with our home repair program. So with that client was also a, she was a 50-year employee of the city of Bastrop. She's retired and longtime resident and active member of your community, so we're very excited to do that repair, and we're going to bring some volunteers from, from all over the country on our Global Village trip coming in, and we'll bring them out to Bastrop and do some siding and repair that house. And we plan on continuing to leverage every dollar that we get, because we have, we realize we have a strong brand, and we have a strong influence in the nonprofit community, and we want to just keep using that in our partnerships with all the other agencies to continue. So what we are asking is $10,000 to serve two clients this year, and we'll turn that into large-scale, critical home repair projects focused on health and safety, whether it's a bathroom remodel with ADA accessibility, or it's simply a new roof and making sure that their floor is secure and they don't have any issues as they try to age in place. Most of our clients are elderly, so that's where we tend to focus. So thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're at-
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
How do you narrow your applicant standard to recipients per year?
So it, we'll open up our, so we'll look at our waitlist. Right now, we have a waitlist of 280 clients, but that includes Austin. So once we know we have funding, we'll go to the most, or the clients that have been waiting the longest on the waitlist, and we will reach out to them and tell them we have funding, we're able to do the repairs, and then they'll go through our qualification process. So we'll make sure that, that they are, you know, income-eligible, that they have the need, and that they're willing to partner with us.
Great, thanks.
So how many, so you include a client list from Austin, so if there's 150 people, and then there's someone in Bastrop, are you using the funds that we give you? Is it like in a pool?
No, ma'am. No. So the, the funding that we would receive would be dedicated specifically for Bastrop clients. So if we have, let's say, 50 clients from Austin, 15 clients from Caldwell County, and then a client from Bastrop, as far as the timeline or our waitlist is, then we'll skip all the way down to that client from Bastrop, because we have funding to serve them. So we do get a lot of funding, but it's restricted to the city of Austin. So we'll work through that. So it's just, when, as funding comes in, it has specific restrictions, so sometimes it's restricted to somebody that's handicapped. So we'll go through and figure out who our first available client that meets those requirements are. So it would stay here in Bastrop.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bastrop County Child Welfare Board. Is there anyone here to present for them? Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry and Support Center. I know there's somebody here.
Good evening, Mayor Schroeder, City Councilmembers, and City Manager Humble. I would like to share and begin my presentation by sharing with you one, a story about one of our clients. This story features an old, the oldest member of our Brown Bag Program. She lived in the very heart of the city of Bastrop. She passed away at age 99, just two months before her 100th birthday. The client was an original member of our Brown Bag Program since November 8th of 1989. She consistently participated in Brown Bag distribution, whole grains, senior activities, as well as fresh food for families until March of 2017, when her health declined. The Bastrop Pantries, uh, Food Pantries' existing database records for this client go back to March of 2009. Since that time, up until March of 2017, this Brown Bag client received services 439 times and 2,985 pounds of food. These numbers do not account for the older visits of services before the November 1989 through February 2009. We believe the Brown Bag Program serves and serviced and contributed to the nutritional and social health of this client. This program ensured that she was not isolated, that she was nourished, and that she was able to remain in her own home and connected to her community. This is just one example of how impactful the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantries programs are to the clients that we serve. The mission at the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry and Support Center is to serve Bastrop County residents going through periods of transition by providing emergency food assistance, education, and support. We're able to meet our mission by providing the following programs: emergency food assistance, our Brown Bag Program, of course, my papers are sticking here, fresh food for families, educational programs, open arms, and these programs and services are available to all residents, including those who are homeless in our county and our city. Currently, 48% of the households we've serviced so far this year are first-time visitors. 21% of them have visited us at least twice, and 31% have visited us more than three times. 60% of the students attending BISD are under the poverty level. Our city and county rates of diabetes are steadily on the rise. That's why it's important to have programs that go beyond just simply giving out food and really address the root cause that brings those families and people to your doors. This is why our agency uses a model that has a holistic approach to service our clients. This year, we adopted our agency's nutrition policy where we really focused on getting out fresh fruits and vegetables to our client and creating more opportunities for them to access those types of items. We have expanded our collaborations to work with the city of Bastrop on their Good Neighbor Program, as well as the Bastrop Literacy Group. The Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry and Support Center is a valuable resource to the city. We are very grateful to have been serving the city of Bastrop since 1987. The support that the city has provided in the past throughout the years has been critical to keeping our doors open and our shelves stocked. We thank you for the current proposal that is before you and its consideration for fiscal year 18.
Perfect timing. You did great.
I was watching him.
Very good. Are there any questions for Miss Silva? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, our next, next organization is Bastrop County First Responders. Mr. Green.
Good evening, everyone. Didn't get a chance to get in here and get it checked out before session started here. All right. All right. As the mayor introduced me before, my name is James Green, and I'm the President of Bastrop County First Responders. We're a fairly not-well-known entity that's been here in the county since 1988, providing first medical response to the citizens of the city of Bastrop, as well as Bastrop County. We're similar to the fire departments in that we are all volunteers, and we respond to 911 calls, but our focus is on medical and not necessarily fire departments. And basically, I'm approaching the community support grant, seeking funding to help us help save lives here of the citizens of Bastrop. We're under the medical direction of Dr. Vera, who is the Medical Director of Seton Smithville Emergency Center. He also works in Seton Main Hospital in Austin, and we provide both basic life support as well as advanced life support. Right now, we have currently about 53 members. They're all certified through the Department of State Health Services, everything from emergency care attendants to licensed paramedics, and we're distributed pretty significantly around the county. I think we have like seven or eight here in the city itself, but we respond all over the county, so the people that are in town running errands are free to run calls. And currently, we respond to approximately 1,200 medical emergencies every year in the county. Over the last four years, our, with the population growth in Bastrop, we've seen our operations on a steady increase as well. In addition to responding to 911 calls, we also provide medical standby services, most notably the Patriotic Festival. We were out there from sunup to sundown in the past. I think we saw 15 patients. Most of them were pretty minor. We had one that required transport. But we also do other standbys, like the, some of the fun runs and rodeos here in, in the city. In May, we started differentiating our statistical analysis to isolate the city of Bastrop itself from the rest of the areas in, in the county. It used to be lumped in with the old Bastrop Fire District, which included the Circle D and the incorporated areas around the city. And in that little over two-year period, we've responded to almost 400 calls here in the city comprising about 18% of our overall call volume. And we respond from everything from car wrecks to cardiac arrests to babies being delivered and the whole, whole nine yards. Our average response time in the city in that same two-year timeframe is about six minutes and 13 seconds. In addition to that, we also provide first responder training, both continuing education to handle our ongoing continuing education requirements for our members, as well as an initial MT basic course that we put on and allow those members to get their, or those people in the community to get their initial certification. I'm running out of time. I guess you'll review everything else in the, in the application, but basically, we're seeking funding for lifesaving equipment, radios, and automatic external defibrillators, which are quite pricey. I thank you for your time.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Jones?
So how is it that people call you? I mean, how are y'all dispatched?
So the call goes to the 911 center, and the, if it's a medical call, the Sheriff's Department dispatchers deem it's a medical call, they'll roll it over to the county contracted private ambulance provider based out of Austin, and then they dispatch us simultaneously with the ambulances. They, they make a triage decision to determine whether first responders are needed, and then they actually dispatch us over the radios, and we get text alerts and some other, other means of notification.
So y'all are like a volunteer support organization?
Basically. A lot of times, in, one of the, one of the metrics that we, I don't have the metric in here, but one of the things I do measure with our statistical analysis is how much time, we often get there, sometimes a pretty significant amount of time before the ambulance will start all the care, just as if the ambulance was there. We average right now about, every month, about four or five hours across the county, sitting at the patient's bedside. That's after we've already responded, we've arrived, and we're providing care over that period of time, awaiting for that ambulance to arrive. Other benefits to the, to the system as a whole is we may get there and determine that an ambulance is not needed, and that can free up that ambulance to respond to other emergencies. A lot of times, a lot of people may not be aware that an ambulance may be responding from Austin, in Travis County, to emergency calls here in the city, and response times can be quite lengthy, and so we can make other determination whether we need to use an air ambulance or other mutual aid, other areas. We can kind of get an idea, have a trained person there to, to triage a patient, determine what the best course of action is, and not having to wait that extended period of time to make that determination.
Great. Thank you very mu, any other questions for Mr. Green? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Okay, Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team.
Good evening. My name's Christine Files. I've been the Board President of the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team for the last six years. Through 2015, 2016, we actually had four disasters within that period of time, and for the first time, folks in the city of Bastrop needed help. We actually served 26 homes within the city of Bastrop due to flooding. 11 of those homes qualified for additional assistance with us, for which we spent $38,000 donated dollars repairing those homes. 100% of those homes were elderly folks who were extremely low-income. So we were able to keep 11 households in this community- So we were able to keep eleven households in this community as a result of being able to make repairs to their home extremely quickly. What makes Bastrop County a little bit different with regards to long-term recovery organization is that we're an up-and-running organization. So when we had four disasters within a year, 2015, 2016, we were able to complete repairs to seventy-two homes, rebuild eleven, within, all of the, all of those were completed by April of 2016. So all repairs total for all the disasters were completed prior to twelve months from the time the disaster happened. That means we can get people in homes faster because we are a standing organization. In order to remain a standing organization, we need support from the community. In addition to the thirty-eight thousand of donated funds that were used to, for materials for those repairs, we brought in volunteers who contributed five hundred hours of volunteer service to complete those repairs. If you costed the, if you put a price tag to those volunteer hours, that's an additional ten thousand dollars in volunteer hours. All total, across the county, though, we, we rebuilt one hundred and forty-three homes and repaired over seventy-two over those six disasters. I'm hoping that you can see the benefit to us. We've been able recently to move into preparedness, and so we'll be having seminars beginning in the fall, preparing the seminars beginning in the fall for folks, for individuals to be able to be better prepared for disasters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Files. Any questions for Ms. Files? Okay, thank you very much. We are now at Bastrop County Women's Shelter, also known as Family Crisis Center.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. It's an honor to be here this evening on behalf of the Family Crisis Center. I want to thank you for considering this application and for your many years of support in various ways that have helped us address the issues of domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking. This morning, while you were sipping your coffee in the comfort and safety of your own home, thousands of individuals fleeing violence and abuse were waking up in a shelter. Nineteen, fourteen of the, fourteen adults and nine children of those individuals were in our shelter here in Bastrop. Statistics show that victims of domestic and or sexual violence often live in silence, sometimes waiting years to reach out for help. So I would like you to consider for a moment, what if it was someone dear to you who is currently living in fear in their own home? What if it is your own child, sibling, or grandchild that is experiencing violence and abuse at the hand of someone who claims to love them? What if your own child, grandmother, friend, coworker, or someone else dear to you is sexually assaulted or raped? These realities may be hard for many of us to fathom, and unfortunately, these issues occur far more readily than any of us care to admit. But situations like these are the realities of the Family Crisis Center's work. The stories shared with our crisis advocates and counselors on a daily basis are disturbing, to say the least. The facts of each situation may vary, but the trauma to each victim no less severe. The critical lifesaving services we provide help guide individuals through many obstacles and challenges in overcoming the suffering, fear, isolation, and other devastating impacts of these forms of violence and abuse. They include emergency shelter, crisis intervention, counseling, court, and forensic medical exam accompaniment, and transitional housing. In addition, each year, our prevention messages are shared with thousands of youth through our school-based anti-violence, anti-victimization programs, and we provide offender accountability programs, including a state-accredited batter's intervention program, anger management sessions, and protective parenting classes. As y'all well are, probably well aware, we also operate a community thrift store called Bits and Pieces that not only raises funds for Family Crisis Center, but provides free clothing and housewares to other individuals in need in the community. So tonight, as you snuggle in the comfort of your own bed, in the serenity and safety of your own home, please know that our staff are busy ensuring that these critical lifesaving services are available 24/7 in this community. I thank you for your consideration, your time and consideration of our funding request, and I invite you, if you haven't already toured our facility, to please do so. We'd love to have you. Be happy to answer any questions about our agency or about our request.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Councilmember Jones?
What about your Bits and Pieces?
Yes.
What kind of support does that provide for your organization?
So it generates about eleven percent of our total income that supports our agency. So it's, it's financial support, but I think just as critical is the support that it provides directly to victims in the form of clothing and housewares. So we, we issue, on average, about thirty thousand dollars in voucher goods. Vouchers is the term we use to, to track the in-kind or the, the items that clients receive for free. And those aren't just our clients, but in community, in partnerships with other community organizations like Children's Advocacy, CASA, the Child Welfare Board, other, other entities as well.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, council? Thank you. All right, we're now at Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center. Now, we're at Capital Area Rural Transportation Center.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager Humble. I know I've provided you some information through your system, but if you don't think I can provide you some additional information?
Absolutely. When you come back, you have to talk into the microphone, and you have to tell us your name.
I'm sorry. David Marsh, General Manager, Capital Area Rural Transportation System.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the plans that Carts has in the future for the next fiscal year for Carts. We plan to expand and renovate our Bastrop parking lot facility and transit station located on Hospital Drive. We plan to transition our commuter services we currently provide to an era of the express route, which will better serve customers and provide more frequent service to the metropolitan area of Austin. I was last at the council, I last, I last came to speak to the council, I think, three or four years ago. I think Councilman Peterson was here. At that time, I expressed my concern about appearing before the community services competition. Carts is not a 501(c)(3). Carts is a public agency, and we think that we can better serve the Bastrop citizens and the public by operating under an airwolf agreement with the city. That way, we can find a way to make sure that what we do meets the citizens' needs and the city manager and administration's needs. So while I'm here to represent the agency for funding, I still prefer not to compete with social service agencies for that funding. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marsh, any questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. The Children's Advocacy Center.
Good evening, Mayor Schroeder, Councilmembers, City Manager Humble. I'm Terry Beatty. I'm with the Children's Advocacy Center, right down the road on Chestnut Street, Yellow Victorian House. We were established in 1992, so this is our 25th year here in Bastrop, and we were established to form a coordinated response to child abuse across law enforcement, CPS, prosecution, medical community, and so on. We know that in Bastrop County, last year, there were 293 confirmed cases of child abuse, and we know that the effects of this on the child can lead to lifelong health effects and mental health and behavioral health effects on the child. We know that child abuse can cause improper brain development, impaired cognitive and social, emotional skills. It can cause lower language development, all sorts of risks for increased rates of heart disease, cancer, high blood pressure, diabetes, and so on, increased rates of alcoholism and drug abuse. In fact, the CDC estimates for every child that is abused, it costs society $210,000 over the life of that child, and that's an increased cost to the health community, the mental health community, juvenile and adult criminal justice systems, and education, including special education. What we also know is that we can mitigate those effects. We can mitigate those effects on the individual child, but also on the societal costs by stopping the abuse as early as possible and by leading those chi- that child on the road to healing and recovery through counseling and therapy, and that's exactly what we do. So we are the first stop. If there's an allegation of abuse, law enforcement and CPS bring the child to us immediately. We have forensic interviewers who are trained to ask developmentally appropriate questions in a child-friendly environment in a non-leading way. Those interviews are recorded and given back to investigators to use in the investigative process and in prosecution. And we provide advocacy to help the family through the process, and we provide counseling and therapy to help the child on the road to recovery, and we stay with that child as long as it takes to get them through the trauma. So we appreciate your continued support. We're asking for nine thousand dollars, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate your time very much. Okay, we're at Combined Community Action.
Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Helen Snow. I'm with the Senior Nutrition Program for Combined Community Action. Kelly Frankie, Executive Director, asked me to apologize for her not being here, so y'all got me. She had a family emergency. We have a center here at the settlement where we serve congregate meals, and that's where they solve a lot of Bastrop problems around the coffee table there. And also, we do home-delivered meals, which volunteers come up, pick the meals up, and take them to the clients. Not only do they deliver a hot nutritious meal, but we also do wellness checks. Can't tell you how many times we have found people that had strokes in their sleep or either fallen during the night, and this way, when the volunteers come, we can get them help, because now, it's not like years ago where everybody lived next door to everybody. Now, family members are out of state, not even out of the country. And also, this enables a lot of the clients to stay in their home, with, keep them out of the nursing home, so they can stay in their environment, and to me, you just thrive so much more better when you stay there, much more better listening to my English. I'm nervous. Okay, your county's growing, so it really stretches our budget, because as any state agency, we don't get any more funding. We ask for donation from the client, but we get very little donations, because when our clients were growing up, they were worried about feeding the family and making a living. 401ks and retirements wasn't even in their plan at that time. So they, what they live, most of them live on less than five hundred dollars a month. So that's not a whole lot. One year of what it costs us to serve meals equals to one day in the hospital. So if we can keep them at home, keep them in their family environment, it saves everybody the money. Like I say, we're growing here in Bastrop. We're located at the settlement, which is a senior complex there. We thank you for the support you have given us, and we thank you for considering us again. And as they say on TV, let's do lunch, so no singer goes hungry. Can I have any questions for anyone?
Any questions, council? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Court-appointed Special Advocate CASA.
Good evening, Councilmembers, City Manager Humble and Mayor Schroeder. My name is Kristy Glasser. I'm the Executive Director for CASA. CASA stands for Court-appointed Special Advocates. Our organization has been in the City of Bastrop for 29 years this year. Our organization is tasked with recruiting community volunteers, training them the CASA way, and ensuring that once children enter the CPS system, we are there to ensure that they have permanency at the end of their case. One of the things that, that, that makes us unique is that, once we have our volunteers trained, our volunteers go out and visit our children removed from this community where they're placed. These children are in foster care. They may be in foster care in Amarillo, Texas. They may be in foster care in Lubbock. They may be placed in Galveston, Texas, but one of the things that we do is we follow those kids wherever they are placed. We are the eyes and the ears of the court. If you ever hear Judge, Judge Eskey talk about the work that we do, he tells our volunteers that you are my eyes and my ears. We make recommendations on what's in the best interest of these children that, while they're in foster care, and make sure that their needs are being met. I want to tell you a little bit of a story about one child who was five years old, actually removed from the City of Bastrop about four years ago, right when I became the Executive Director here. At five years old, she was placed in a residential treatment center because her behaviors were so out of bounds that a regular foster home could not handle her behaviors. They sent her to this residential treatment center, and when our volunteer went to check on her, one of the things that we do is we ask to see a medication list, because we want to make sure that the children that we work with are not being over-medicated. When we received that list, we found that this child was on twelve different mood-enhancing drugs at the age of five. And so immediately, my supervisor stepped out, called me, and said, we gotta do something. By the end of that day, we had every doctor that had prescribed drugs to her on the phone and had her off of, at the time, seven drugs and down. But the, the thing I want you to know that's important is that, had we not been there to check on that, she probably would still be in that residential treatment center today. We pushed to ensure that this child had permanency. Her great-grandmother, at the age of eighty-eight, adopted her a year and a half ago, and she's now placed back with her grandma, her great-grandmother here in the City of Bastrop, and doing well. But we fought to make sure that we got her off of those drugs. We fought to make sure that she had permanency, and that's one of the main things that we do, is we want our children who are removed from the communities that we serve to have permanency, because we do not want them to stay in foster care forever. On average, our organization serves about 347 children a year, and about a hundred and sixty to seventy of those are from the City of Bastrop alone. So we are, again, asking to be included in the budget for this upcoming fiscal year, and thank you for the continued support that you have provided in the past. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Glasser. Any questions, council? Thank you very much. The Honor Choir.
I can say that, this, I'm Bill Owens, the Director of the Choir. I can say that, speaking to you, seven people is a lot harder than conducting thirty-six kids singing. This is Francis and Shelby. They're co-presidents of the Honor Choir. And they, I'd like to, I'd like to say also they're co-volunatorians at Colorado River Acclaim of Academy, which is spectacular, and that's why they're the President of the Choir. In 2009, I got a phone call from the people at the Advocacy Center, and it was nice to have Terry come ahead, because he sort of laid the groundwork for what I'm about to say, with the idea that when they have their consciousness-raising event at the courthouse over year in April, they needed some way of enhancing what was happening, because it was mainly speeches. Can you do something musical? Because they knew I had the music store. I know a lot of people are musical in town, and so maybe we can, and so I asked some kids I knew at church, some kids in my private studio, and kids at school who are teaching at school, who are teachers, who are singing in the school choirs. I played the piano for them. Could they join? But provided I can know from their pastor, from their principal, from everybody else, not just their mom, that their kids have highest character. So our banner says, "Character, Grades, and Then Voice." So the only kids who are invited in are invited specifically by me on the basis of what I know about their character. So they're very committed people. And I like to point out that they are kids of great empathy, great wisdom, and a lot of courage, because they learn about something very hard that happens to people they know at school. So we organize this choir to sing at that event, and we've been singing since that time. Our mission statement, "With the power of music to heal a broken spirit, we sing for the children who have no voice, who have no choice. We honor them and those who help them by sharing our energy, our resources, and our song." The kids who are in the choir sing for over 20 events in Bastrop. You may have seen them do that. And they sing, "On behalf of those children whose lives they honor." That's the purpose of the word "honor." They put in 100 hours of rehearsal per year. 100 hours. I'm going to be quiet, because we have quickly to say that we need $10,000 for a trailer. I cannot carry that stuff anymore, and we need to continue paying our accompanist, and he's called $13,000 a year because it's a bust we've got. Shelby and Frances.
Hi, I'm Frances Ramirez. I just kind of want to talk about how much the choir means to me and to the rest of the kids in the choir. Since I joined, it has been a home away from home for all of us. It's been a great place for us to be ourselves and learn to be advocates, not only for ourselves and for other people. Not only are the members of the choir, do they consider each other family, and not only are they advocates, but whenever we go on our enrichment trips every summer, out of state and even to other countries, we represent Bastrop. And so with continued funding, we could operate at a level of professionalism that would make the citizens of Bastrop very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Honor Choir? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You did good.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask one. How many, how many kids are in the choir?
There are 36 kids now.
Thirty-six.
In the Streets Hands Up High.
Good evening to you all. My name is Julie Smith. I'm a volunteer at In the Streets Hands Up High Ministry. We have been in Bastrop County for four years. We have a ministry to the county that has four components. The Man of the Cross program is a 12-month Christian program that provides shelter and meals to men who are committed to becoming clean and sober. And currently, we have two men that recite on campus. The Work Program has two men in it right now, and they work in the community and they live on campus. The Soup Kitchen serves breakfast and lunch six days a week to people who are homeless and food insecure. On average, we serve 50 people a day. The program provides a space for people to get in, out of the element, get a hot cup of coffee, fellowship with one another, play bingo and other games, and have a great meal, all provided by volunteers. Everyone at In the Streets Hands On High is a volunteer. Many volunteers keep this program running by volunteering to prepare meals and donate supplies. Safe Program is Safe Acres Family Environment. This will have eight houses placed on campus, with two showing up on July 22nd. The two houses have been sponsored by First National Bank and Amazing Floors. These small houses will be for families that have lost their homes and need a temporary place to live. We have an office building, and it was donated by Woodman Life. We also have a Wesley Nurse from Elgin, who visits with people every Monday. She provides blood pressure checks, diabetes checks, and refers people to a variety of resources. And these people, for the most part, have no insurance or are underinsured. As you can see, we collaborate with many individuals and businesses. This grant, if received, will provide funds to purchase food from Central Texas Food Bank, continue to repair the infrastructure of the house and property, and provide fuel and maintenance for the two vehicles the ministry owns. Thank you for your consideration. And if you have questions, I will try and answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions? Thank you very much. Alphabetical order, if you're paying attention, we're at Keep Bastrop County Beautiful. Hi, Ms. Middlebrooke.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager. Thank you all very much, city employees, and all the folks that are here. It's just an amazing turnout, and I'm so proud of our community and very inspired by everyone here. I am Melissa Middlebrooks. I am the President of Keep Bastrop County Beautiful, and it's my honor to represent our 15-member All-Volunteer Board for tonight's presentation. Shanda Hernandez and Scott Seltzer are also on the board, and I appreciate their support. So thanks for coming up here with me. KBCB is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) Gold Star affiliate of Keep Texas Beautiful, and our mission is to inspire individuals and businesses to improve their community and the natural environment. And if you'll take a look at our slide here, I'm just going to briefly hit the highlights of what we did last year. Some of our programs, we organized the Don't Mess With Texas Trash Off at Bastrop State Park. We collected 400 pounds of trash and recycling along the Loop 150 and along Highway 21. In 2017, we did it again in April, and we had over twice as many volunteers, and we collected 868 pounds of trash from around the Bastrop State Park area. We produced the Bastrop River Valley in September of last year, where we clean up a section of the Colorado River, starting at Fisherman's Park down to the Takeout into Hesion Village. Thank you very much. Okay, and so we collected 15, over 1,500 pounds of trash and recycling, tires, old refrigerators, you name it, out of the Colorado River. We also put on a 1K and 5K fun run, river run, where people got to run over the old iron bridge. And then we had 45 environmental educational exhibits for kids and families to come out and enjoy. We partnered with the Lost Pines Master Gardeners, HEB and Waste Connections, to help students at Bastrop Intermediate School create school gardens. And you should have seen the tomatoes that they grew, just fantastic. One mom said that her daughter was trying vegetables that she would never even attempt to eat because she grew them herself. So we were pretty excited about that. We also offered two $1,000 environmental scholarships in partnership with Lone Star So we want to, we want to continue to do all of the programs that we've been doing, but we want to also increase. We want to make little parklets around Bastrop County, little, nice little sitting areas where people can rest. And we're really committed to making this a walkable city. We also want to start an Adopt a Street program, so that groups kind of have an opportunity to adopt a section of the street. Thank you very much for your time.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Good job. Good job. Thank you very much. Okay, we're Literacy Volunteers of Bastrop. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor Schrader and Councilmembers. I'm Dale Burke. I'm the President of Literacy Volunteers of Bastrop, which has been operating for over 28 years here in Bastrop, working with especially people with low literacy skills, which not only clothes the English literacy, but also their math and all the different subjects. And we work alongside of Community Action of Central Texas, and I'm also the Coordinator here in Bastrop for that. And what we are doing, we're doing some exciting things this coming, this last year and this year. We are now expanding, we have been primarily working with Literacy Volunteers of Bastrop with adults, but we are now, because of the great need that we have, especially for Spanish-speaking people here in Bastrop, which is 36%, is what we saw for the percentage of people that do not speak English here in Bastrop. And it's also, and we're looking at 19% of our students, of people here in Bastrop that do not have a high school diploma. And also, 14% that are low, of those people are the lower, below poverty skills. So the people that we work with, that our volunteers work with, are the ones that are falling out, especially in our GED classes. We're now high school equivalency. We do more than just the GED. We are partners with Workforce Solutions, and it was Department of Rehabilitation, DARs, it's now VR, and we're partners with them. Now, Literacy Volunteers of Bastrop, which I say we are now expanding into being partners with BISD in their, in doing ESL classes in the schools here. BISD is providing the childcare, and we are, and the facilities, and we are providing the instructors with Community Action, but we are providing also, this is where we are expanding. We are doing family, our desire is to do family literacy. We've had volunteers that have been working with our instructors in our classes, but we also, because we have childcare, we're now going, wanting to have a volunteer working with the children also and bringing them together. And we're seeing some positive things with that. So we're very much on the growth here. We're needing more money for our volunteer coordinator and to build our classes up, but we're excited about where we're headed. We're partners also with Head Start, and we're partners with the Food Kitchen. And we have, we use our resources. We're in the library. We're, we're doing great things. So we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burke. Any questions? All right. Okay, we're at MEELJ Justice Center, Inc.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilmember City Manager. My name is Aaron Timmons. I am the Program Administrator at Melge Justice Center. We were formerly Melge Justice Center, now Melge Center. And on behalf of everyone at Melge Center, thank you very much for inviting me here tonight to highlight what we do in our community, which is mainly action-based service. Our mission is to provide true opportunity to at-risk youth, the formerly incarcerated, and families who have been affected by the penal system. Our vision at Melge Center is a community of equality, education, and liberty for everyone, regardless of class, creed, race, religion, or background. To do this, we provide a number of programs and services. Melge Center is able to help people enter back into the free world from being incarcerated. I wanted to highlight two different programs that we use. First of all, our at-risk youth program, which is called our HOPE program. It stands for Helping Other People Excel. This is from age ranges 13 to 21. We offer services such as drug and alcohol, abuse courses, counseling from licensed professional counselors, education and support sponsorship, employment training, community involvement. All these things combined together to achieve the goal that we have, which is to create a brighter future for youth that in many times have nowhere else to go. Our other program that I wanted to speak about is our For Real program. This is our anti-recidivism program. We work directly with formerly incarcerated individuals, and we support them with education, GED services, employment sponsorship, housing sponsorship, counseling, healthcare advocacy, and community involvement. Again, our goal in this is to create a sense of caring and wellness for those individuals whom, without any help, may commit new crimes and be rearrested or reincarcerated. Melge Center's staff and volunteers are innovating the future of reentry in Central Texas. In fact, we're the only organization in our area that focuses specifically on reentry through evidence-based programming. Melge Center was founded in the city of Bastrop, and most of our early success was here in the city of Bastrop. And this community is very near to our hearts, so we're asking the city council to strongly consider funding our continued efforts to strengthen the community through outreach and services. Thank you very much, and we would appreciate your full support.
I have a question. So how are you linked to the schools as far as getting involved with at-risk children? And I just specifically want you to talk about Bastrop.
So we work with the independent school districts specifically in Bastrop. We also work with juvenile detention centers, which is where we get a fair amount of our at-risk youth participants. And we provide them with services from linking them to tutors that can help them, to responsibility courses, to the drug and alcohol addiction courses that we offer.
What kind of success rate do you have?
In the first quarter, or in the first two quarters of this year alone, we've had over 40 participants, and within 90 days, none of them have recommitted any crimes or recidivated at all.
Do you have a breakdown of where those people are?
I do. And I did not bring it with me today, but I can provide that information to everyone on council.
Because you guys are located in Austin, and you're speaking to Central Texas. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the 40 people are across Central Texas?
Right. So we used to be, we used to have our main office here in Bastrop. We moved our main office to Austin to better serve the Central Texas region. And we actually, this year, opened up our second location, which is in South Austin, off of 71, but we still serve Bastrop community, as well as Hayes County, Travis County, Williamson County.
Do you keep volunteers here? I mean, what does that look like?
We do. So we have volunteer workers. We also partner with AARP, and they provide senior workers. Through them, we give them work experience, and also Region 13, where we give job opportunities to disabled or disadvantaged individuals.
Councilmember Peterson.
Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Timmons. I would like to know if you could provide us with this information. How many clients have you served in the Bastrop, Bastrop area in the last 12 months?
In the last 12 months, I don't have the statistics on that. I do have our numbers for 2015, 2016, which we served in the city of Bastrop, 28 program participants, and goodness, I would say, let's see here, about 23 or 24 more in the outside areas of Bastrop, just outside.
So the 28 was a, is that your fiscal year 15, 16, or the?
Correct.
Any other questions, Councilmember Peterson? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mission U2. Hi, Jonah.
How are you guys? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Jonah Byer with Mission U2, for those of you that may not have heard about it. We exist to feed people physically and spiritually. And we do this by going into our communities, and we set up on a weekly basis in different locations, and serve a hot meal to anybody who desires to join us. And the whole purpose is to unite the community, share the gospel, and to meet the physical needs of individuals in our community. So we have about five sites. We have five sites in the greater Bastrop area. Two of those sites are in the city of Bastrop that serve every week. One is at Premier Baptist Church down the street, down the road on Water Street, serves on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 6:00. And then the other one is at the Housing Authority on Linden Street, that serves from 5:00 to 6:00 on Sunday evenings. Anybody's welcome. Between those two sites, we serve approximately 450 meals each week. So different individuals that come, and then we provide a study, short Bible study afterwards for anybody that wants to stay. It's not required, but it's there for those that want to participate. We have approximately 50 volunteers that help throughout the week in coordinating for those two sites. About 32 roughly serve each week at those sites, providing about 100 volunteer hours each. serve each week at those sites, providing about a hundred volunteer hours each week between those two sites for the city of Bastrop. Those volunteer hours are focused not just on setting up and tearing down and serving, but also on pouring into the lives of the people that we're serving. So where our real strong point is, if you've ever been out to one of our sites and visited us, is really walking alongside individuals that are struggling with a variety of different things. So not only are we there to feed them physically, but feeding them socially by providing an atmosphere to come and be heard, listened to, along with emotionally, in walking alongside individuals to address their various emotional needs, and then spiritually by sharing the gospel in the hope of our Lord Jesus. So that's a quick overview of what we do. The budget for those two sites in the Bastrop area to serve those sites every week is about sixty thousand dollars a year, and that provides food and staff support and all the other resources needed to service those two sites. So we're asking for about fifteen thousand dollars for this upcoming year. Appreciate you guys' time. If you have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any questions for Mission U2? Counsel? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to extend a special thanks to all the organizations that present. I know it's not that much fun, and it's nerve-wracking, and there's a lot going on. So I really appreciate you taking time out of your day. I know with volunteers, your evenings are precious, and you've got a lot of priorities. I just really appreciate the time, and I think I'm speaking on behalf of council that we appreciate the time you took for the applications and for your presentations. So we are now at Citizen Comments. And yes, you are very much free to go. Have a, have a good evening. Okay. Ms. Becky Wumble.
I just want to come up and publicly thank the city staff for everything that they did during our Patriotic Festival, and I think that they deserve a round of applause. The Chamber would also personally like to thank you for the funding of the Patriotic Festival. I can report already that we had two hundred and sixty-two runners on Friday night just for our first inaugural run, white and blue. The dance didn't go quite as well as we thought it would. People didn't stay out quite as long as we thought they would, but we'll try again next year. But we have gotten tremendous feedback from people across the community and across central Texas. And I can't wait to report some of the numbers when it comes to hotel stays, and where the runners came from, and where people came from on Saturday to visit, and enjoy the water rides, enjoy the petting zoo, the car show and everything. So thank you, and we could not do it without the partnership of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Wumble. I think that was two hundred and sixty-one runners and one walker in, council member, Nelson. He finished, and I know that when we came back through and were headed down, he said, "We go and go back? Why am I leaving?" He wanted to hang a left and go to the finish line, I think. Okay, our second person signed up for Citizen Comments is Deborah Johnson.
I thank you. I just wanted to let you guys know, and all the public that's listening, that Bastrop has been invaded by toads. These are not the ones that stop development or cause warts. These are four absolutely cute little bronze toads that were cast by the, designed by Clint Howard and cast by Deep in the Heart Foundry. They were, four out of eight were installed last week. So if you're interested, and you're young at heart, or you have a kid or a grandkid, Thaddeus T. Toad is at the base of the flagpole at the library. Crocus and Juliet are just before the beginning of the old Iron Bridge with their love lock. Just on the, the street lamp, on Chestnut, just above where Pickin' on the Porch happens, you can find Waylon Willie. And Floating Gary is on his inner tube at the top of the stairs going down to the river behind the museum. So I invite you to go see it. This program was inspired by a program in Greenville, South Carolina. We borrow it wherever you can get it, called Mice on Main. And my grandchildren were the ones who introduced me to mice on main. And they saw the toads last week, and they said, "Oh, DeeDee, these are lots better than the mice." So thank you, guys, for funding this project, and I hope you'll enjoy it. And the last four should come in by September first. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Keep your eyes peeled for the mice. We are now at the Consent Agenda, Madam Secretary. Oh, is there, does any council member want anything polled from the Consent Agenda? I'm getting no nods. Madam Secretary, any citizens want any Consent Agenda polled? Equally, no interest. Okay, Madam Secretary.
Okay. The Consent Agenda reads as follows. Item nine A, Consider Action to Approve Minutes from the June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen meeting. Item nine B, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number two zero one seven dash one eight of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending section nine point zero nine point zero four one. Open for emergency, fire and rescue services, close for, are authorizing the Bastrop Fire Department to seek reimbursement of costs of certain emergency fire and rescue services, approving a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item nine C, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number two zero one seven dash one five of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Article four point zero three, taxicabs, shuttles, and touring vehicles, providing the requirements of operating a taxicab, shuttles, and touring vehicles, and designating the city manager or his or her designee to enforce all requirements, approving a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item nine D, Consider Action to Approve Resolution R dash two zero one seven dash four eight of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for hydrogeologic consulting services of Sims Borough Well Number One to the Thornhill Group Incorporated in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. And that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. I'll be willing to entertain a motion.
I move to approve all items on the Consent Agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Thank you very much. We are now on item ten A, Consider Action to Approve Resolution R two oh one seven dash forty-six of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing Bastrop Art in Public Places to acquire through purchase five permanent sculptures, amounting to fifty thousand, four hundred dollars in accordance with the city's purchasing policy. Ms. O'Brien?
Mayor, council, in the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget, Bastrop Art in Public Places budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars to acquire permanent art installations on behalf of the city. The board voted on their June seventh meeting to approve the purchase of five pieces of sculpture that are outlined in your packet with photos. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. O'Brien?
I do. I think the biggest comment that I've gotten is, why aren't they spread out? Because they're all kind of clumped together. And I've had that multiple people ask me. I mean, is that just because it's inaugural, and then they're going to be, like, put in other locations? But anyway.
And I may have a different answer than other people, but Bastrop Art in Public Places is funded strictly through hotel occupancy tax. And so I think the art has been placed in areas that are usually visited by tourists. Deborah, is that?
No, maybe not. Deborah Johnson, Chair of BIAPP, is here as well.
One reason why four of the five are clumped is because four of those were part of our sculpture call for this year. And we tried to place those fairly close together so people can easily walk and see them. These five, when we asked for the funds on our budget, we specifically said for this year, we're going to be looking for pieces that, through their subject matter, through their theme, would lend themselves to the Cultural Heritage Trail, should that be approved and funded. All of these pieces would fit within that program, but they also are a very appropriate subject matter to after this next year, when we replace these with twelve more sculptures from the sculpture call, should that be funded. These pieces will be spread out to various locations owned by the city, public, other public parks, other public corners, places where they're easily accessible, but they won't stay necessarily where they are this year. Because, they are where they are because of the sculpture call. So yes, we do plan on this artwork being out and about.
Councilmember Ennis, did you have a question?
Am I correct that the, the sculptures are purchased through hot funds, like you say, but it is, that is defined by state law, that there are certain things that hot funds can be used for, and art is one of those categories?
Absolutely. Up to fifteen percent of hotel occupancy tax receipts received by city governments can be used through public art, various functions.
Great. Thanks.
And just a clarification. So the twelve that are on display now are part of the sculpture call that BIAPP does, and those are not the permanent locations. Because once you acquire these pieces similar to the two pieces that are out front of City Hall, and the piece that is out in front of the Visitor Center, these five pieces will be moved to a different permanent location once acquired by the city. PIAPP is tasked in their bylaws with determining and making those recommendations. Any other questions for Ms. O'Brien? I've prepared to entertain a motion, should anyone want to make one?
I have another question. Are those locations brought, approved through City Council?
I'm new to this, so I'm going to defer to the chairwoman. Basically, the way our bylaw is stated, the city council approves and funds programs. In the past, they've also wanted to approve purchases, but they have generally left, past city councils have left it up to BIAPP to determine where different pieces go. We're certainly open to suggestions. Again, we're looking at what's the purpose of the sculpture call, what's the purpose of the Transformers. And we do acknowledge that, you know, walking, walking distance is easy, but as this permanent collection grows, it will, we will be finding places. But we're certainly, we don't, haven't in the past had to have permission for where to put them, but we're certainly open to suggestions.
Great. Thanks.
Still waiting on a motion.
I so move.
Got a motion from Mr. Peterson, a second?
Second.
Got a second from councilmember Ennis. Madam Secretary, is there any discussion?
Got some discussion about where these sculptures are going to go in the future. But my wife loves the Scarlet Hearts, so she can start them in my yard.
Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. All right, we're now on item ten B, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R two oh one seven dash forty-seven of the City Council of Bastrop, Texas, approving and accepting the transfer of real property described as Lot One, Lanford Place subdivision, properties R three six eight three one and R four eight seven five seven, Bastrop County, Texas, from the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, authorizing the execution of a special warranty deed, repealing all resolutions in effect, and providing an effective date. City manager, is this you or Mr. Kirkpatrick? Hi, Sean.
Mayor, council, thank you all for having us. Back in January of fifteen, the EDC Board voted to transfer this piece of property up by Mayfest Hill to the city of Bastrop. When we received the special warranty deed about six weeks ago, our legal counsel in reviewing the file recommended that the EDC adopt a resolution donating this piece of property, or transferring this piece of property to the city, and the city accepting that through resolution and properly papering the transfer. The property was acquired many years ago when the convention center was being considered, and Mayfest Hill was a location that was being considered for that facility. And so the EDC acquired those, those sites adjacent to the rodeo arena up there. This is really just a housekeeping matter to complete the special warranty deed and the transfer of that property to the city. The EDC doesn't have a use for it, the piece that actually fronts. Loop one fifty has a very large pipeline easement, and it is well-suited for parking for the rodeo arena, and it does not have any commercial application. It's one of the sites when the county and their HUD GLO project, we looked at citing it there, and it, just with the easement, was not going to work, and they ended up on the other side of the property.
Any other questions for Mr. Kirkpatrick? Councilmember Jones, are you? I'd just like to move. A motion.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Okay, we're on item ten C.
Mayor and council, at the last meeting, we discussed purchasing or acquiring two pieces of property in Alley D. Two items were pulled from consideration. One was parking property owned by the Smartsnicks and property owned by the Chamber. The reason that we pulled the request for the Chamber was the Smartsnicks, at that point, were interested in keeping their property in private ownership. Since that time, they have contracted with the same contractor that the city is using and are going to pave their portion of their property, which then makes it reasonable for us to go back and acquire the property that is currently owned by the Chamber, so that all of that can be contract, can be concreted. All but the Smartsnicks will be under the ownership of the city, which certainly makes it much, much cleaner and easier to manage the utilities and the public purpose. So once the Smartsnicks indicated to us that they were interested in paving, I reached out to the Chamber and asked if they would continue to consider our offer. They have done that and have verbally agreed. That certainly is pending approval by their board, and they meet a week from tomorrow. There is some slight wordsmithing still going on with the conditional purchase agreement, so I would ask for your consideration to approve the purchase of this property, knowing that the attachment of the conditional purchase agreement is still being tweaked, but will be reviewed by legal counsel and will be good for both parties if signed. So that's my report for this evening.
I move that we approve the purchase of this property and instruct the city manager and city attorney to work out the details.
I second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Oh, sorry, discussion?
I have a question for the city manager. So these conditions will be worked out between their board and, and your offices?
Essentially, it's going to be between their attorney and ours. And once we get the legalese and the attorney satisfied, then I'll sign off on it, and hopefully their board will approve it.
But you don't see anything substantive that we need to?
No, sir. It's clarifying, just making sure that we understand our roles. I don't think there's a problem with any of it.
Gotcha.
Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
All right. We're now on item ten D. Andreas, are you going to bring me a clicker? Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R two oh one seven dash four nine of the city coun, of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming the Economic Development Board and Housing Authority appointments of the mayor as required in section three point oh eight of the city's charter, as outlined in Exhibit A, and establishing an effective date. And I promise, Mayor Protem Schiff, this will be extremely fast. So I just want to bring you up to speed with where we are. I wanted to include the review that you had. Again, when I made the last round of appointments, I made a comment that there had been a Again, when I made the last round of appointments, I made a comment that there had been a memo that I wrote that was included in the packet. Again, there was a memo that I wrote that was included in the packet, and this PowerPoint is a summary of that information. I took very much to heart the feedback that I got from council at our last meeting, and so for the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, I am appointing myself to place one, and I have completed an application that, it was scanned in and provided to council like the other applications, and I also wrote some of my qualifications for serving on that board. The other appointment that I'm making tonight is a gentleman named Carlton Harris. He has previously served on the Housing Authority Board. He's being assigned to a different place, so that's why it's not a reappointment, and we got his application after I had to turn in the packet last time, so that's why he was not included. With putting Mr. Harris on place three, that board is now completely full, intact, and that was a special request from the executive director, Randy Spencer. Looking to the future, we, I think everyone was in agreement that there is some improvements to be made to our applications and that we would like to be able to file those electronically as early as next year. We talked about the board fair day, the council interviews, the shifting of the terms from a June to an October, so it could align with the fiscal year, with budget and with work plans, and we also, here comes the homework, we talked about council liaisons for each board. Some of you are better at your homework than others of you, and perhaps if anyone has sent me an email that I haven't read, I apologize in advance. But since I am appointing myself to BEDC, I thought it would be appropriate for me to be the representative for BEDC. I also, I participated in BAAPP in their board meeting last week, and so I would also like to be the liaison for that. Councilmember Nelson has been appointed to the Hunter's Crossing Board. You guys did that with your unanimous vote last time, and he also reached out and asked to be on parks. Councilmember Ennis asked to be for Main Street Board and planning and zoning. Nothing about, the reason it says current status is because nothing is locked in stone, but look at the wonderful math. There are three of you left and six boards left. The Housing Authority, we have no jurisdiction for them. They are under federal regulations, and the only thing that we do is appoint their board, so it didn't seem appropriate to require a council liaison for that. We will not, it's not a pop quiz. You do not have to sign up for anything tonight, but I'd like you to see what board you might be interested in and/or let the negotiations begin, if there's, if your favorite board is already picked. I would encourage you to not pick boards that meet on the same day of the month. That's not a good reason to make both of your board meetings. So, just wanted to give you an update with where we are. The other thing I wanted to give you an update, it's one thing of who is appointed, it's another item of who's left, and this is a list of all of the boards. This was also included in my memo. If they, if, when you look at this, this was not in my memo, and I apologize. The reason it's bold, it means yesterday I got their application. So, their application is in-house, but I didn't get it in time to put it in the packet on Friday, and so I didn't want to list their names, and I didn't want to try to change what we were making appointments to tonight. If it is not highlighted, it means I, but it says "application pending," it means I have had a conversation with an individual who is committed to fill out and turn in an application, but as of 3 o'clock today, I had not received that application. So, I'm very much hoping by our next council meeting that I will have all of the applications and be able to make all of the rest of the appointments. You will notice that on the cemetery board, place two, and it is important that we fill the alternates, but for places for the board, cemetery board, place two, I do not have an individual for that. The two people who are rolling off did not fill out applications, but I was going to reach out to them to see if they were still interested, but I would encourage council and citizens, if you know anybody that's, would be interested in serving on the cemetery board, I would certainly like to receive an application from them.
Mayor, if you don't mind, let me talk just a moment about some of the items that the cemetery board is going to be involved in this next year, in hopes that that may help you with some applications. The city of Bastrop owns, I believe it's called Fairview Cemetery, and it by ordinance is a perpetual care cemetery. And so, we are in the process of hiring an actuarial to come in and help us with a calculation on how to manage that resource long-term, and what does that look like from a maintenance standpoint, and what does that look like as it is completed. There is also going to be funding included from one-time sources of money for ground truthing. What ground truthing is, is going to give us the ability to go into a section of the cemetery where we have reason to believe that there are bodies buried, but there are no cemetery markers or headstones. So, they're going to help us identify that. We also need to have a holistic review of our documents and procedures relative to the maintenance and expectations of the cemetery in conjunction with the perpetual care actuarial study. That's a hard something to say. So, all of that to say is, there's going to be some really important work conducted next year from a policy standpoint of the cemetery board. I'm pretty passionate about cemeteries. My husband and I visit. I think that how we deal with and respect those that have gone before us is an important commentary on us as a community, and given the historical value of our cemetery, I think this is pretty important work. We will be setting some policies and some standards that will certainly be a part of this community for many, many years to come. So, if you think that it's not going to be interesting, I would beg to differ, and if I weren't staff, this would be a board I'd have a personal interest in. I just find all of that pretty fascinating.
Thank you very much. I was, I meant to ask you if you would do that earlier, and I forgot, so I'm glad that worked out. And then also for the statistics, I will continue to keep these. The numbers that you are seeing are, assuming that I get council approval on the two appointments tonight, that will bring me to a total of 32 appointments for this year, and 56% of them are new to serving on boards. You can see that it changes slightly. We had been 40, 40, 20, but adding two people, and that's how math works out, it's slightly 38% downtown, 44%, you'll recall that that is inside the city limits, but not downtown, and then 19% in the ETJ. And then it just so happens that, because I'm female and Mr. Harris is a male, that we are still at exactly 50% for each one. So, I respectfully request that the city council confirm these two appointments, and I am certainly available to answer any questions. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
You have some question about the capabilities of the new EDC nomination, but I won't, I won't voice them now.
I appreciate your sense of humor, Mayor Protem Schiff, so very, very much. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor, if I could be clear, I'm not sure about the second. Who made the second?
Val Nelson.
Yeah. Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have no executive session tonight. It is 8:24, and we are adjourned.
I move for adjournment.
Second.
And by acclamation, we're adjourned. 8:25.